Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. We are here for the regular session of the Capella City Council Meeting. There is a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room, after which I will come back out and announce a work session. We'll be back with you shortly. Thank you. We are at the end of executive session. The time is 6:00 PM, and we will be moving into work session in the first-floor conference room off to the right of the council chambers. The public is invited.
I was at the EFW at 14 last week.
Oh, wow.
And I looked down at it, and I go, "Yes, it is." So I reached down, pushed it back, and the red light went on.
It went like this, a little volley.
When I turned it off, there's a red light that is on. And when you push it on, the red light comes on. So I was, okay, so I just made myself feel better also.
That's important.
Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 6:01 PM, and we are convening into work session. We have six items on the agenda tonight, and we're going to start off by discussion. And we are going to start off discussing the agenda items. Does anybody have anything to bring forth on the agenda? Gentlemen.
Cliff was talking to the judge.
Yeah, that's right. It looked like they were looking over dessert.
That was very kind of him.
Does anybody have anything on the agenda for the, would like to discuss on the agenda items?
So I know we're going to be talking about the, our full reconstruction, so I'll go ahead and reserve that for later once that discussion comes up. But I have a couple of questions on consent item C and D, I'm sorry, D and E. We'll talk about C in a little while.
Okay, D is the roofing at Rolling Oaks, and E is Span. We're going to have a presentation from Span as part of the...
Oh, I'll wait on that one, too.
Well, we won't be able, it depends on what your question is, because item eight is just the annual report by Span. So let's let Kent...
I could wait until then.
Let's let Kent talk about item D, if you would, please, sir. And John, what was your question?
On item D, the column bearing, we're talking about Rolling Oaks. Is this a similar situation with, we had with the senior center?
The damage is similar, so the condition is similar. The difference is a repair is not really possible in this case because of the skylight.
Sorry?
Sorry, restoration.
A restoration of the roof, which is what we did for the senior center, is not possible because of the skylight that's involved.
Okay, but this was also submitted for insurance claim, but that was denied?
Yes, sir.
So it's a similar situation with the other one? So I'm just wondering, is there any other that we're going to be facing in terms of the repair that's been caused by the hailstorm in 2016 and 18 that's coming up? Or is it...
Do we have any other roofs that are planned?
We have, the core has some damage, but on that one, we're currently involving an architect and an engineer to make a report to go to the TML and say that, yes, the damage is not just cosmetic, it does need to be repaired and replaced completely. So hopefully, we'll be successful with that.
And I know we have some issues with this claim, so I'm guessing that there's a different or better procedures for future insurance claims?
Well, we know that the insurance company denied the claim because the roof was still functional. So if we have that kind of damage again with a similar type of roof, I would expect the claim response would be the same.
That's all I had on there. Thank you.
All right, and did you want to ask about E?
The only thing I had questioned was if we had any data on the usage.
Oh, that will come out, I'm sure during the presentation.
Yeah, so that's why I should wait on that one.
Crystal here.
No, sir, but data will be provided, and we can also get additional.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any items on the agenda? All right, let's move on to item B, presentation by the Capella Art Center. Ms. Penelope, are you...
Good evening.
Good evening. You've been waiting patiently out there.
Yes, I got here nice and early.
I told you it was 6:30, sorry.
Well, everyone, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Penelope Fari, and I'm proud to serve as president of the Capella Art Center Foundation. Thank you for your time tonight. You may have remembered exactly one year ago tonight, Greg, our vice president, was joining you and giving you an update. So he's here with us again tonight. Todd Storch, our acting secretary, is here, and we have several members of our board also watching. So thank you, guys, for watching. Now, Greg was with you a year ago. I know you all have slept and eaten since then. He had just given you an update on the foundation, what all we were doing and up to. We had just refiled amended bylaws with the IRS, building on top of the work that the city had done earlier. We're happy to announce that our C-3 designation was awarded at the end of February. So we've been really operational for about five and a half months now. Our mission and singular goal is to ensure the success of Arts Foundation Center today and in the future. And success looks like a lot of different things. Financial success, perception in the community, and really across the region. Attendance, artistic integrity, high quality, and also being the venue of choice. And we're really happy and proud to be joining you all in this journey. Many of you all have seen this slide, and these are our four strategic pillars. And this is really what we're all about in the places that we work. The first one is cultivate, and it's, yes, green for a reason. And this is really providing short-term and long-term supplemental and enhancement support to the art center. The second one is elevate, so elevating the rest of the art center team with our volunteer efforts. A great example of that is Greg and Todd, serving on the marketing committee. And they meet with the art center staff at least twice a month, where they compare notes, they give advice, perspective, and they say, what is the art center going to do relative to marketing and branding, and what is the foundation going to do? So distinctly separate, but very collaborative responsibilities. The next thing is activating, volunteering our time and our talents. If you look at the bottom there, you can see this is really an executive group that has the unique ability also to roll up their sleeves and get things done. To date this year, we have donated 1,447 hours to the art center and to the foundation. And finally, advocating, ensuring the art center and everything that it's about has a positive perception, and really, we work to make course corrections as needed. For example, Alex has a very robust social media marketing campaign, and sometimes we'll take that and we'll pick it up. We share it with our communities and the groups that we're involved with. We tack it on to all the various 7019 groups. So that's how we collaborate and we expand on those things. And I certainly understand, while you're looking at the budget this year, there's a lot of focus on the green left one, but it's very important that all four of those pillars are active and engaged at all points in time and all year round. The green one does not happen unless the other three are up and running and running successfully. Any questions on our four pillars and where we operate? Great. Development, I know this is the one you guys are excited about. We have a really nice mix of opportunities for different ways for people to participate and to meet their philanthropic goals. The first one is the donor wall. Thank you to those of you who have donated. I love seeing your names up there. So far, we sold 66 over 100 planks, raised over, just north of $66,000. We're getting ready to do another installation of names pretty soon here. Next, we have the speaker series, and we're so excited that we have a $30,000 restricted fund sponsorship from a Capella citizen. She, together with her family, leads a family foundation. And this is just very, very unique that we were able to score this in our very first year, and we're really over the moon about it. At the same time, I do want to share with you some of the challenges of restricted funds sponsorships. So first of all, they can be very challenging to secure. There has to be a one-to-one relationship between a sponsor and the offering or opportunity in there. So that can be challenging to get, to find someone who's like, yes, I love, love, love that one thing versus just a general donation. The second reason why these can be challenging is because the donor is the driver, how these funds are used. They drive what opportunity they go to, and they also drive within that opportunity how they are used. We're very fortunate, we have a good relationship with our donor. She's given us a lot of leeway and a lot of trust on what we do and doing what we think is best to help maximize. She's done a unique thing. She's given one thing of, I really don't want you to do this, but she's also set us like an aspirational goal to really challenge us to think bigger and broader beyond just the Capella Art Center and a local speaker series. So we're very excited. We're working on how we can really take her funds and maximize them. Mary Cirque, we're working with a local service organization on a performance sponsorship. We've given them a couple of different options. They can both work, it's just a matter of which one that they want to go do. The poster series is very exciting. We've commissioned art for two posters to sell a limited edition series of these that commemorate Capella landmarks, so that's very exciting. So if you all are working on your Christmas list, this would be a lovely Christmas gift for friends and family. North Texas Giving Day, we're participating in that. And finally, our end-of-year campaign. Any questions on any of these offerings that we have for our community?
On the speaker series, if, who initiates the speaker? Can the foundation or the art center, or does that need to come out of your donor?
So this series, so this is Alex's series that he does every year. And so this is the speaker series. It's got a focus this year, and so Alex had the offering that came out of his budget, and then we had someone who was interested in donating. So the cost, our donation will cover almost half of what his cost will be. Any other questions on development?
John?
When you went into this year, and I know this year's sort of been different and we got a year sort of delayed start and everything, but did you have expectations, like you wanted to get, like from a development standpoint, a certain number that you wanted to get to? Did you have a goal or something out there? And it's sort of, how have you compared to that number with what has happened so far?
We definitely do. We look at each development opportunity independently, and we almost have like a P&amp;L for opportunity. And we look at not only were the dollars raised, but how much effort was it to really raise that? Because if it took a ton of time and the return was small, then your OI is not really that great. But yeah, we're right where we want to be for year one.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Anything else on development? Programs, lots and lots of fun. This is what everybody love, love, loves. Our strategy going into this year for programs was to get as many people to the art center as possible, and it will continue to be a big focus for us next year. And what we're finding is, whereas Alex is reaching people that are interested in the arts or have a friend in the arts or performance, they have a reason to go there, we're finding people who say, like in the words of my next-door neighbor who is a musician, she said, "Oh, that's what that big building is. I didn't know." So we're finding that we are reaching the people that don't have any awareness of the art center or what it offers or all the great things. So what is great about this is we're finding those people, we're bringing them to the art center, they're having the great facility, they're having a wonderful time because of the strong execution of the brand promise, and they're like, wow, I love this. So those people that were previously unaware are now a potential donor, they're a potential patron. So we've brought them into the family, and that's what we think is a big added benefit of the programs. An example of that was the dog parade, which on a hot June morning, we had 135 attendees. Nothing to sneeze at. We had 20 furry four-legged braggarts, so they were lots of fun. And the plan for this is to become a signature event. So this is something that we will do year after year after year. We think it has lots of arms and legs onto it, and we've seen it really thrive in other communities. We're working on finalizing our plans for the 2022 programs. We'll have a final list in 2021. We have confirmed, though, the Texas A&amp;M singing cadets to join us on January the 8th. Now, I do need to state my conflict of interest. I am married to an Aggie. I did walk in here with the burgundy mask. However, this opportunity, just like any other opportunity for programs, it doesn't matter if it comes from the art center staff, if it comes from the community, or if it comes from us, they are all scored embedded equally. The same amount of rigor goes through all of them. Any questions on programs?
Was that, was that dog program a fun-generating event or just a get-people-out event?
Both. We made, as you can see, Camp Bow Wow was our title sponsor, and we're appreciative to them for coming on, so we made a little bit of money off of it, not a lot. It was really get the people out. The genre that was exhibited was comedy. We had a comedian come in from Fort Worth to go kind of emcee the proceedings of the day. Yeah, so, but it was both. And interestingly, we attracted a lot of incremental traffic from the farmer's market across the street. Lots of people wandered over from there. So that was really a great way to see that both groups can have events at the same time, and it really play off of each other very, very successfully. On the program side, we have recently changed our fiscal year to match the city's fiscal year. We think this will be better from scheduling, funding, things like that. Our board service year will also follow the same schedule, so we're excited to be on the same sync there. We're also finalizing our set of financial policies with a very intentionally conservative approach. So some examples of that are, one, we want to have one year of operating income on hand at all times, so we're not going to be kind of running low and lean. The second thing is in programs. Generally, we raise money for programs in one fiscal year, and then we do our election and our vetting, and then we distribute that money the second fiscal year. So we're not in a situation where at the beginning of the year, we make a commitment that we have to scramble for the year to raise that money, and then we get it, and then off we go. So it's separate one year. So very, very conservative, a very, very slow roll on that. And then we're also looking at a policy to have a percentage of our monies that we raise every year go into the endowment. And so that endowment gives us that long-term vehicle, those bigger purchases, long-term planned things that both sides really need to start thinking about now. I know we're just now getting around year one. You guys, our five-year celebration will come up on us very, very quickly, and we want to start thinking about now, what does that gala look like? What does that big gift look like? How are we going to commemorate five years? We also have completed a risk evaluation on all of our operations, and for the items that we feel that need, that we don't have compensating controls for, that are better balanced out through insurance, we're procuring the correct level of insurance. That's a combination of policies, long-term, and also individual policies for programs and events that we think are a little bit hierarchist. We have a strong governance committee, and that's been a really lovely surprise out of all this. They're super committed to the effectiveness of the board. They ask us a lot of very challenging questions. We have some great candid conversations, so that's a refreshing add to the board. Our officers for '22 have been elected. Greg and I are going to join you for another year. Pamela Gaines will assume the role of secretary, and Nadia Gibbons will continue her role as treasurer, and she is also a CPA, so we're glad to have that expertise on the board. Any questions on operations?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the roster. There are 15 board members. Is that correct?
Fifteen is our maximum for our bylaws. Right now, we're at 13. We've had a couple of people that have had to resign for business or family reasons.
How long do they stay in the position, and what's the process of selecting members from the community?
We are on a, or will be on a three-year rotating, so about a third, a third, a third will rotate off at the end of every year. What we're doing right now, in fact, tomorrow night, Jennifer Holmes, our governance chair, is onboarding a new set of volunteers. We're asking those volunteers to join a committee for six months. We want to make sure that there's a good fit on both sides for new people, and the ones that have the right skill set, we feel it's the right fit, they'll be invited to join the board.
So somebody has to sponsor, or just have to volunteer?
No, actually, we get these really great cold calls of people who call us, and they're very interesting and very talented and very skilled, and they said, "We've heard about you, we like you, we think you're doing something interesting, we want to be part of this. We love startup." Here we are, and Jennifer and I generally go have a coffee or a meal with them and see if there's a fit, and then we invite them to join a committee. But that's one of the nice things, is words got out, positive experience, we've got a lovely building to show, and people want to be on board. Not a bad place to be, folks. Any other operation questions? While all these wonderful things are going on, we are still very, very much in startup mode. The MOU is done, the facility use agreement is in the first round of legal review right now, with some other things that we want to do. But it's important that we continue this startup mode and that we get this work done for several reasons. One, we want to make sure that the foundation and the city are aligned and protected with respect to important aspects of their relationships. So for example, donor privacy. And we also want to make sure that we have the correct relationship with our donors. The second thing is, this prepares both parties for future opportunities. If we have a really big corporate sponsor who wants to come in, we want to make sure that we have the right instruments in place to go secure that large sponsorship, that we don't have to go backtrack and deal with ourselves and figure out how is all this going to work. We want to have that in place already. And then finally, donors are really impressed with the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness that we're going through in setting all of this up. It really gives them great comfort, especially for a new foundation and a new art center, to say that we've already got all these things in place, that we're not waiting and just raising money and go, oh, gosh, we didn't think about that. So in the absence of having a strong track record, this gives them a lot of comfort. We feel that that then is going to translate into dollars and more donors, so we're excited about that. Any questions on some of our more startup activities that we have to go through? We will definitely be in startup through the end of this calendar year and a little bit into next year also. Looking ahead to the next year, we will continue development with activities, annual events, and a gala. So that is definitely on our calendar, so get your tuxes out, and we can't wait to see you. We'll continue friend-raising through programs and outreach activities. We want to tell our story from the foundation point of view, in concert with the art center, with an independent website and social media channels. And finally, increase the productivity of the board through tools and automation. The only other thing I have for you guys, you guys have all seen this before, this is our monthly dashboard that we share. This is our top sheet. You can see it, it's color-coded across the pillars. We have our startup activities with status, hours, dollar value of hours. This is our top sheet. We're also taking this to the next level so that all the committees will have their individual monthly metrics that we'll also track so that we can report on those also. So we're trying to build those metrics in now that we're in the startup mode. So again, as we grow, that's just the fabric of how we do business. What questions can I answer for you guys?
We're stunned.
Yeah, I don't have any questions other than, I mean, it was a great overview. I appreciate you coming and, you know, just letting us know how things are going and kind of what the next steps are. I think that's always important, just to understand how, if any, we can be of assistance to, we always wanted to, you know, we want the foundation to be set up for success and the art center to flourish. So again, appreciate your time, and the overview was very well done.
Thank you.
And Tom? I was just going to sort of echo what Brianna is saying. We have a great building over there, and the more and more events and just community events that we have there, whether they're related to any of our companies or not, it just reinforces how great a meeting space we have. And the fact that the foundation is being set up and so much thought and time is going into that, I think will be a great addition. So we appreciate very much the presentation and the work y'all are doing.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to just to add, thank you, tell all the volunteers, the staff, thank you for the patience that everyone's had to endure over the last year. It's been frustrating for us, I'm sure it's been frustrating for you guys, and thanks for the patience and all the continued hard work.
Yeah, we'll continue. We're there, we're with you.
All right, anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, item C, presentation by BJ Wagner of the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute regarding proposal to conduct mental health needs assessment for the Metro Crest Services Region. You don't look like BJ Wagner.
I'm not BJ Wagner, but I'm here to introduce her.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know that BJ Wagner is with us from the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute, and she is here to share with you a proposal that's a needs assessment, a mental health needs assessment for the areas of Carrollton, Farmers Branch, Addison, and ourselves. And this would be a partnership with Denton County. So if you recall, at one of our budget workshops, we asked council to consider budgeting $25,000 for this needs assessment, and it would be a partnership in which Denton County provides $200,000 and the cities provide, I'm sorry, Dallas County, sorry.
Dallas County.
And partnership, we would provide 25, not the rest of the cities would as well. So we asked for more information about it, and we asked BJ Wagner to come here tonight. She's with us on Zoom, so she'll be presenting this policy or proposal for this assessment, and she'll be able to answer any questions that we might have. Welcome, BJ.
Good evening, and thank you, guys, for having me go over this presentation with y'all. I regret that I can't be there in person. Just briefly, I am Zooming in from my home here in Georgetown. Recently, I was on a mountain climbing expedition in which I broke my leg and cannot travel by car or plane ticket to y'all this evening, but I am thrilled to be here to be able to discuss this assessment. It's been a long time coming. We've been working with the crew and y'all for, for a few years on this for some time. And so I would like to structure this assessment is to start, I'll give you guys a brief introduction on how we approach it, give you some sample data from an assessment that we completed in a different area of the state, let you guys ask some questions as we go through the assessment, and then give you a timeline of what we believe are the proposed timeline that we have for the assessment in this area. And of course, let y'all have any questions that you may have regarding kind of the overall package. So if we can just start with the next slide. So if we can just start with the next slide. So at the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute, everything that we do is from a data-driven perspective. In my role with the Meadows Institute, I cover our policing and our data, our justice-driven programs. And when we're looking at public safety programming, data is very important to us because, of course, anytime that we are looking at making program recommendations on public safety banking programs, they have to be efficient, and they have to be effective, because we're talking about affecting real people's lives and their everyday life. So we want to make sure that data-driven policing is at the forefront of anything that's happening in our public safety work. So we follow these five main areas when we're doing this. We want to ensure that we're increasing efficiency. If you're spending money on your public safety work, you should be able to reinvest and get some return on your investment. So we want to ensure that the law is medically informed and medically safe while recognizing that public safety needs and risks are always going to be in anything that's happening in this space. But we also want to increase effectiveness. We have to provide immediate and appropriate connections to care to eliminate the emergency cycle. You'll probably be tired by the time our engagement is over. You'll be tired hearing me say that anybody can design a crisis response program, because anybody can design a crisis response program. The key is to design a crisis prevention program. You want to be able to ensure that you're not just designing something that's going to keep you in the business of going to the same homes over and over again. You want to solve people's problems. You want to have an effective program that addresses homelessness, that addresses transience, that addresses crises, and ends those problems instead of just responding to them really well. Anybody can do that. You want to identify your problems and intentionally place these programs in such a way that it's addressing what's happening in your town and not just the new fad in public safety. And it has to be connected to your community so that as people are being connected to care, they can access that care and not have to access care 45 minutes away. That's not useful to anybody. And then they have to be able to gain ongoing insights. So as your city grows, as your region grows, the program can grow and adjust with it. So you're not spending money on an assessment again in five years. Next slide. We do this by looking at data in an overlaying way. We don't just grab data and look at it and start making decisions. We want to look at it in multiple different ways. So the data that I'm going to show you is examples, again, from other areas, but we would look at data in much the same way across your region as well. Next slide. We want to start by understanding when things are happening across your region, and we do that through heat maps. And this is an example of a heat map. Oftentimes, when people talk about public safety and mental health, public safety and homelessness, or public safety and transience issues, they begin by thinking that they need a 24/7 solution, that Saturday through Sunday, from midnight to 11:00 p.m., they've got to start staffing and having programs. When we look at heat maps across the state, we really know that that's not true. Most programs, most issues, most call volumes start to pick up around 10:00 in the morning and starts to fade around 7:00. When we start mapping calls, we see that. So we'll do that same thing here, and we can take a look at the next slide. And we'll do it in a couple of different ways. We'll start by looking at a single snapshot, and then we'll overlay, because we'll be looking at a four-city region. And we'll want to look at different types of mental health calls so that we can really understand in depth what this looks like. We can look at a single snapshot, like the last slide that we saw. And then we'll look at different types of mental health calls, different types of public safety calls related to homelessness, different types of calls related to your hospitals. And everywhere that we see dark red, we'll know that you have high call saturation. Where it's green or cooler-looking, we'll know that you have light call saturation. And we'll start to develop then an impression around your region of when and where, or when and how often you're having mental health calls, calls related to homelessness and calls related to transience within your public health or public safety and hospital system. And we can do it in the next slide. And I slid this slide because it allows us to do a comparison. We'll be looking at four cities. And so this is, while this is an inter-battalion comparison, we'll do an inter-city comparison so that we can know, we can then come back to the four-city regions and make a regional recommendation. And so we can look and make comparisons across the region to know between the cities, when the activity is highest in one city compared to another, on which days each city has peak activity compared to others, or is there similarities and are there differences amongst the cities? And then we can pull your particular city out and show you the differences just in the cell as well and what's happening within your own town. Next slide. And we'll just skip over to the top of the slide. We then take a deeper look, and we go directly, we pull X, Y coordinates of areas of interest and go directly to zip codes. And so for instance, here, and you can tell this isn't San Antonio, we look directly at zip codes of interest to look at specific call types, to see what those call saturations look like. And then we go deeper into that zip code and look at things such as demographics. We look at other types of calls that are happening within those zip codes. Are there a lot of hospitals there? What types of businesses are in those zip codes? Are there bus stations, train stations? Are there all the Bell Bonds types of businesses? So what types of things may be contributing to mental health calls or identified mental health calls in these particular areas? But now we're also getting an idea of where people need to invest programming. One thing that we use this data for, the primary thing we use this data for, is to make sure that we're telling our clients where to invest or where to place programs, where to reorient resources that you already have, that you may not even have to do any investment, but where to reorient your existing resources to focus on solutions if you just have one or two areas where you need. And here, we were able to tell San Antonio, you really only have two areas of interest. You're a very large city, but we really only have two areas of interest where you may have thought in the city this size you needed a citywide solution. We were able to identify only two zip codes in the entire downtown region that really needed some reorienting resources. And if we had not taken this very focused approach here, it would have been very easy to say, spend a lot of money following your downtown homelessness or your downtown transient solution. So we want to make it sure that we are taking a very focused approach and really narrowing in on what the data is telling us. Next slide. And then as we begin to zoom out, we want to make sure that we're doing a good comparison. For instance, when we compared these two areas, we noticed that the very next, there was one area that had such a high number. They had 2,460 of these routine mental health type calls. And the area with the next highest type call was 1,200 less, and that really piqued our interest. When something like this piques our interest in an assessment, we want to dig a little deeper. And when we dig deeper in here, we found out that the area that had the highest number of calls also had a hospital that was frequently requesting police officers to come to that hospital to do emergency detention. So we knew then that the city didn't need to invest any resources in this high saturation area, that they needed to go on down and have a meeting with that hospital about the best use of the police department, and it wasn't doing emergency detention for people who walked into a hospital asking for care. And so again, it's just a way to make sure that we're using your data really well to help you develop solutions and not just recommending that you spend money and add resources to your existing public safety program. Next slide. But there are some things that we have to make sure that we're taking into consideration and digging a little deeper into. Oftentimes, when we look at public safety data, folks are not pre-programming that data to find all of the mental health calls or all of the things that are related to homelessness within that public safety data. And what I mean by that is these calls are often coded as welfare checks, public nuisance type calls, public intoxication, disturbance, and those sorts of things. So we have to do call overlays, call compares, call comparisons, so that we can find how often public safety resources are responding to homelessness issues and mental health issues. But we also have to see how safe these calls are for non-police officers to be able to handle. To do that, we have to look at when force is used on these calls. And so we have to identify what we call response to resistance or use of force corridors. And this is an example of how we do that. We pull use of force data and identify when it happens most often and plot it on a map. And so that's what we're looking at here. And it usually is easy to see from a bird's eye view, the areas in a city where use of force or where response to resistance kind of plays out most often. Very rarely do we see this uniformly applied across the city. And so here, we can see very clearly if it's in a linear fashion in this particular map. Next slide. And so then we want to look at when mental health calls are overlapped with the most frequent calls and when calls related to homelessness are overlapped with other most frequent calls within a police department. And that's what we see here, and it usually comes right to the surface. Here, we were able to immediately identify four areas where mental health calls, calls related to homelessness, and calls related to other most frequent calls in the police department were readily available to us. We quickly identified the four most common places. Once we identify those four most common places, we want to identify the most common calls, and this is key. This tells us the kind of program that's going to be most responsive, the safest, and it's going to end the chronic crisis cycle for the people living in this city. And we can tell that as soon as you look at the next slide, and you'll immediately see the kinds of calls that we found. Next slide. So we can see the most common calls that overlay are calls that are not safe just for a civilian to attend to. We saw that they were disturbance, 911 hang-ups, shots fired, family violence calls. So when we put all of these data packages together, we're able to quickly isolate a single location in town, quickly able to isolate all of the things that don't need programmatic resources or resource allocation. But we're also able to quickly determine the kind of program recommendations we can make by the types of calls and the safety level of these calls. And so we really dig thoughtfully into the data that we are gathering, but we don't stop at this quantitative type data. If we can go to the next slide, and I think we're just going to hold here, we're going to hold that gray spot for just a bit. We also will sit down and speak with several of your stakeholders. We'll want to do some focus groups with your police officers, with your paramedics, and visit with your hospital personnel. We'll want to talk with your mental health professionals, city stakeholders, such as yourself, and people with lived experience with mental health. We'll want to visit with a few business owners and just get a general idea of what everybody's experience is and put the whole picture together with this quantitative data. When we get to that point, then we'll start making program recommendations. So we'll go through this entire assessment process, and it takes several months to do that. So before I go into what the timeline is, I want to pause and see if anybody has any questions about the data and the process.
Counsel, any questions?
BJ, this is Mayor Mays. I did have one question for you. When you started talking, I got a little confused about the overlap between public safety and mental health. And as you were talking, I think I inferred that since most calls are coming through the public safety services, that they are then sorted into a mental health category? Am I interpreting the statement correctly?
Somewhat, you know? For 30 years, you know, we've been told that you need help call 911. And so oftentimes, people will call 911 when their loved one is in crisis, or if they see somebody acting in such a way that they don't understand. And so what happens frequently, somebody who is in a mental health emergency, their first contact is with law enforcement. And also, the only people in our state that can enact an emergency detention warrant or take somebody into detention against their will to a hospital for mental health services is a police officer. So people will often call 911 that emergency detention will happen when it begins to beg quick for law enforcement. The law enforcement can be the front door to a mental health hospital for many people. But that data is not often readily available through just a quick query or through law enforcement report management systems, because those calls can be coded as suspicious person or welfare check or a disturbance or a family violence call or something of that nature. So we have to dig through that data afterwards.
Thank you for clarifying. Counsel, anything else? We got a shaking of head, so continue on, please.
Okay. So this process would unfold over the course of several months. In the first month, we would want to hold a kickoff meeting, which would include stakeholders yourself, our public safety partners, public partners, and mental health partners, that what we call key stakeholders, vested stakeholders, and finalize our work plans, finalize our data tools, and just initiate our prevalence and search capacity analysis. That would be months one and two, where we would also image out our first set of data, ask people to start sending data to us in plainness. Through months two and three, we would get all of the readily available data sent to us. We would begin our onsite reviews, focus groups. We would, a lot of this is now done through Zoom, telephone interviews to try to minimize travel as much as possible. I know in my work in law enforcement, some experience has worked well with police and firefighters. We usually go on a team for that. But everybody else is doing really well through focus groups, through Zoom and telephone interviews. Through months four and five, we would complete all of our onsite and complete all of our final focus groups and interviews. We would complete our data analysis. And in months five and six, we would begin drafting an initial report. We would start talking to you all about what we found, what our initial recommendations would be. We would do any kind of cleanup, any kind of final interviews or wrap-up with any stakeholders in that month as well. And by the sixth and seventh month, we would be asking you guys to take a review of our first draft of our report. That would include all recommendations. It would include any kind of cost analysis that would go with the recommendation. Sometimes that cost analysis would be, you don't need to spend any money, you just need to move some of the body cast around, or maybe, you know, you need a regional approach. And then in month eight, we would finalize that report and do a presentation such as this, that would have some of the data that you saw, but it would be specific to your city, and it would have very specific program recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your, thank you very much for, you know, you've given us a lot of information to think about. We appreciate the time you spent on this. There's a lot of things that I need to think through. I'm seeing the, kind of the nodding of the heads around the table. So thank you very much for your information, and I'm sure Ms. Vicki will be getting back with us very soon on this. Cliff, I didn't look at you. Were you okay?
Yeah. If it's helpful, we submitted kind of the final written proposal that has all of this on paper to Mr. Redden for distribution. So it is on paper to kind of thumb through. It's only 10 pages, so it's a lot briefer than anything I said tonight. So you guys could have that like in front of you to thumb through. It's available to Mr. Redden for distribution.
Okay, thank you. We do have a question from Mayor Protiel.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Thank you again for the presentation, the information. You mentioned San Antonio. What other cities are y'all currently working with, if you're able to provide that information?
You know, a lot of cities aren't crazy about introducing their data, but I can tell you, whatever cities we're working in, we created a rock care team in Dallas that, as you guys know, we're now city high, that's been, I think, a six-year-long project. God, but has it been six years since we started? I think it sure has. So we've worked in Dallas, Lubbock, Tyler, Waco. So we've worked in Dallas, Lovett, Tyler, Waco, El Paso, Midland, Odessa. You know, I want to say we've worked in probably 25 cities across Texas. And I consult with police departments across the country.
Gotcha.
But I would have to go back to each individual city and ask their permission to release their data. I had to ask San Antonio specifically for permission to release theirs. As you can imagine, a lot of cities don't like to have their, that kind of data.
No, absolutely. And I wasn't looking for the actual data. I presume that's confidential. I was just wondering as far as cities were concerned and how they compared to maybe a city like Hump Hill. So that was really helpful just to get an overview. So thank you.
And in the written proposal, we included a list of similar projects too on that last page. But, you know, we worked in Dallas, we've worked in Irving. Try to think of your neighbors, Sherman and the Texan region. We have worked there, we've worked in Waco also, and then some other like-sized cities maybe. I said Lovett and Midland, El Paso, Tyler. And those are probably the closest cities to your size that I can immediately think of.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for joining us remotely tonight.
Sure, thank you guys. Y'all have a great evening.
Heel up soon.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item D, discussion regarding the Parker and Hollywood Drive Outfall Reconstruction. Mr. Collins.
Going to begin by giving a little bit of background on the city's policies as it regards work in the creeks and streams. So where do we work? Where do we not work? So by policy, we have a responsibility to maintain conveyance in the stream. So if we have a blockage, if we have a tree that's fallen in the creek, we have contractors or we have staff that will go out and try to get that removed to maintain conveyance. We have creeks and streams that run through city-owned property, on our parked property. We maintain those creeks and streams, the stream banks in those areas so it runs through. We also have a responsibility to maintain our storm drain infrastructure. So you look and see a storm drain pipe, storm drain outfall, we have a responsibility to maintain that infrastructure. The last thing is, if we have infrastructure that maybe is within the limits of a creek or a stream and it's being compromised due to erosion, we'll go in and need to protect that infrastructure. For example, stream G6, we had a small sanitary sewer line that was being compromised and exposed, so we needed to go solidify that and protect it. So those are really the areas where we go in and we will work within a creek or stream. The project talking about tonight, which is item 10C on the consent agenda, relates to us maintaining and repairing infrastructure, storm drain infrastructure, outfall within a drainage easement. So I also wanted to mention that for this item in work session, there's no action requested, but this item is on consent, so we wanted to provide the background and walk through what these projects are, how they're funded, the cost, all that information in the work session. This is, this project is funded through the 2020 bond sale. This was one of the drainage improvement projects that we had identified in the 2020 bond sale. So first project, Parker Drive Outfall. The picture on the top left, you can see the purple line that comes through between the two houses. Those houses are 945 and 949 Parker Drive. The light blue line indicates the center line of Denton Creek. So what happens is that storm drain, which is in a pipe, comes between the two houses and then it daylights, so it outfalls. And what's happening is in the top right, that outfall structure is failing. And the more it fails, the more we have erosion, the more it takes land with it. That is within our easement, so we have now designed a project to go in and make repairs that are necessary. We're going to, what we're going to do is remove the last section of pipe, replace that, reinforce the connection to the pipe, extend it on out to where it daylights. And I'm kind of looking at the bottom photo now. We're going to stabilize the ground above the pipe, okay? And you can see in the photo in the top right, there's some bag walls there. Those are in good shape, they will remain. We will use gabion mattresses and rock riprap to stabilize the outfall itself so that the storm water, as it leaves the subdivision, goes into that storm drain, goes through the two houses, as it outfalls, as it daylights, it's going to run over a stable path and then get to Denton Creek. This particular solution is planned to be built on piers. You can see the five, I think it is, helical piers. Those are piers that you would, that you might see underneath a swimming pool to stabilize a structure like this. You'll notice in the Hollywood project, it is not on piers. It's, a lot of that is due to the slope in the short run of this particular repair. You know, access to these projects is difficult, so we've been in contact with the neighbors on both of these locations all through design. Access to the project site will be using, or our contractor will be using, small equipment, think like Bobcat or Walk Behind type equipment. We've been in contact with them. They want this project to happen, and so we will be accessing the project through their properties. We've been in discussion with them about restoring their property to the existing or better condition. Yeah, so the sandbags or the bag walls, those will remain. And with that, I will move to the next location. This is the Hollywood Drive Outfall. It's a little different. You can see in the bottom exhibit, it's a longer run. In this case, the pipe actually discharges further away from the creek. And what's happening is that's where the outfall structure is located, but there's a channel, it's an open channel downstream of that, between that and the creek itself. We've had a lot of erosion. That's the picture on the right. So the perspective on that photo is if you were standing fairly close to Denton Creek looking back upstream towards the houses. So what we will do, we'll go in, we'll use gabions, we will use riprap to stabilize that stretch. You see there's a couple of, there's three drops. Those are to stabilize the energy in the, in the actual storm water as it runs in this open channel. So it's not just a nice steep smooth slope. We'll actually take that energy out of the flow at those three drop structures. And as I mentioned, in this case, it's a longer run, the slope is more gentle, we're not using the piers. As part of the design, we've looked at the soils and the conditions and stability, so in this location, we would not be using the helical piers. As I mentioned, we've been working with the neighbors in this location. We're talking about between 216 and 220 Hollywood are the addresses. We've been talking to them. Again, they want this project. They want our outfall in this channel to be stabilized so that they have a stable area to work around or to tie back into. One thing I'll mention, you know, with gabion baskets, there's different ways to coat that to familiarize you. If you're not familiar, gabion, those are, it looks like loose rock wrapped in like a mesh, a galvanized mesh or steel mesh. In this case, we use galvanized wire with a PVC coating. So that's what will be used in this location. So we advertised this project. Took us a while to get it designed. It's difficult, access is difficult to this, for these types of projects. We opened bids on July 8th. We received two bids on this project. Both, or the winning bid is about 15% lower than our engineer's estimate. We're familiar with both of these contractors. Canary does, helps us with a lot of our utility repairs when we have a large main break. They're one of the contractors, local contractors, that we will call to assist in those types of repairs. A and B Construction is actually the contractor for our Denton Creek drop structure as well. So we're familiar with both of the contractors, they have good references, so we're comfortable that it's a good bid, even though we didn't get a lot of bidders. We estimate that construction cost, if it's awarded, sorry, construction time, if it's awarded, is in the four to six-month timeframe. So once they start, completion will be four to six months. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brianna?
First of all, thank you for the presentation and the visuals, just understanding kind of what the process is and the next steps that are being taken. Quick question, what's the, this might be a dumb question, but I'll just ask anyway, lifespan of the repairs that are going to be made or the outlays or just how long it lasts? And then from a maintenance standpoint, I presume that we're also responsible for that? And so just curious about the short term and long term of this.
Right. This, you know, this neighborhood was built in the mid-'90s, I think '95, around there is the plat date. So, you know, we're almost 30 years with what was originally installed. I would expect what we're putting in is much more armored, is much more stabilized, and I would expect this to last at least that long. Now, I will say, some of the conditions we've seen in Denton Creek over the last five or six years are maybe different than what was experienced in the previous 20 or 25 years. But this, these outfalls are much more stable than what was installed originally. So we would expect kind of that, you know, 20 to 30-year lifespan, and we will maintain it, and that's part of what we do with the DUD funds.
Thank you.
Mark?
On the Hollywood Drive Outfall, back in that photo, are you keeping that existing bag wall as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Cam, of course you would. I see the blue dotted lines there, that's the personal property border?
The, so the blue, well, the aqua line is, represents the creek. The lines between the houses and along the back, that's, those are the property lines.
Okay.
And then the purple line is the storm drain.
Right, that's, that's the easement?
Yes, the, yeah, I think we have a 20-foot easement, drainage easement, so it'd be 10 feet on each side of that purple line down the creek.
So I assume you said 30 years ago was originally put by the developer, right?
Yes.
The builder. Did we have to do any maintenance during this 30 years?
We have maintained it, but it still has eroded. Yeah.
And what's that structure just north of that swimming pool, right where the purple line comes in? Is that the outfall pipe?
Oh, yes, yes. Right, basically where the, that purple line ends, there's a symbol and that's the, that's where the outfall, the head wall is, or the outfall structure.
And you're not having to rebuild that?
In this case, no. The outfall structure itself is still stable, so we'll tie into that and stabilize the channel downstream. Thank you.
So I saw when I went over there, it's not really, I guess, readily accessible for people to see, so is that being coordinated with, for the homeowners, with the access?
Yes, we've talked, we've been talking to the adjacent residents throughout design, really for the last five or six years about these projects.
And I'm not sure how far away that, the beginning of the construction, I guess, you know, work is, but I'm guessing that it's far enough that it's not going to impact the property in any way.
Right. The plan is to stay within our easement. If we get outside, it would just be like to tie into the bank to stabilize. But again, we're going to be coordinating with the neighbors on both sides.
And one more, I know that Kimberly and Horn, they did the review, and what's the cost of having them review the construction work?
Well, they designed the project.
So what's the cost on that?
$130,000 for the design.
That's for both?
Yes.
And for public work, you can only ask for qualifications? You can't ask for a bid for the design fee?
And I will say, they helped us assess the city. There's eight of these outfall structures along this stretch of Denton Creek. Part of their scope was to help us assess the condition of all those outfall structures, and these were the two that needed to be repaired at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Cam. All right, item E. This is discussion regarding a liaison assignment to the Carrollton Region Medical Center Community Advisory Board. Couple of weeks, maybe a month ago, you got a, an attachment to the, an email asking if anyone had any interest. I received no response from anybody. We're, the medical center is still asking for a liaison. We don't have to give them anybody, but the opportunity, if you're interested, is still open. There was, the letter is attached to your packet tonight, so anybody have any questions about that?
You know, I sent an email, and I can't remember if I got a response. Do you know when they meet regularly?
They, they don't meet regularly. That's part of the challenge.
Ah, okay. I think I got that response, I just couldn't remember.
So there was a no response, or a non, was it, there was a non-response?
Yes.
Do they expect to meet like quarterly, or do they?
No, they, they, really, they don't have any set.
Okay.
This guy's a little gave us his thoughts then, huh? It's a suggestion?
It's a, it's an idea.
Hey Wes, I'd be happy to do it unless there's somebody else that's interested.
All right. Is anybody got a burning desire?
Great, that's all.
Ms. Brianna?
What's that?
I said quite a responsible.
Yeah, it sounded like. Thank you for taking one. All right.
Well, I was just thinking how I do, I'm on the Parkland Foundation, I used to be the chair of the board for Los Plin's Medical Center, so I've done a few things with different medical centers and hospitals and happy to continue collaborating with our partners, so.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. We found a woman for the job. Okay, item F, discussion regarding boards and commissions process. I knew that this was coming up, it caught me by surprise when I saw it in the packet. There's a letter attached talking about our boards and commissions selection. There is a list that I need to get back from you guys, listing your order of preference, and please put this, one through seven. Seven, thank you. On what you would like to do, this is going to be very similar to what we did on the, um...
Boards.
Committees.
Committees.
Committees assignment, thank you. I just went blank. I just went brain-dead. This is going to be, this usually requires a little bit of magic also, so keep in mind that you may not get your first or second, well, you'll probably get one of the two first or second choices, but you may not get everything you asked for. You're probably going to find some that... You're probably going to find some that are down at the end. So the calendar for the interviews is on, on another sheet. Let me just give you the heads up, late September and October are going to be busy. So just keep that in mind. I, I usually think that October tends to be our busiest month. All right. Anybody have any questions? We will be providing some guidelines on how the interviews, you have a little bit of latitude on how the interviews are done, on who you want to.
It's okay.
You're doing a great job.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Is that going to interrupt the man?
No.
I will take the hint and turn it over to you.
Yes, I was like, yes, yes, just hitting everything.
And you're like, no, keep going.
I just hope you arrive at the same conclusion.
I believe we will. Yes, I believe we will.
So there is, I'm, I'm going to give it a preference and I'll let her finish it up. There is some latitude on when you go into the selection criteria. You may be faced with 15 candidates for three positions. And of those three, all of your incumbents have reapplied. And those are the types of discussions and decisions that we need to have. So those are, in the past, Brianna, help me out. In the past, early on, everybody interviewed everyone. And that could get very, very, very long, especially on some of the boards where you have 15 and 20 people apply for a board. Some of the boards will have two or three people apply, and you have the other extreme. And then, I'm going to give it to you in just a minute. And then in November, when we actually sit down and do the selection cri- or the, the approval by the council, we do have the latitude to move people from one board to another. So it, this is, this is, this is an interview process, and it's not necessarily guaranteed that the person that interviews will be getting that particular position. We do usually ask them cordially if they mind serving in a different position that's actually on the application. And it's not uncommon that we do do a little bit of trading in the end. But we do try to find the best people for the positions and it's, it's, it's worked out well so far. Ashley, I'll let you have it.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. But it's very important to have that historical perspective because that is something that's invaluable and that I don't have. So we have spots for animal services, advisory and appeals board, board of adjustment, conduct review board, the Ford Task Force Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Smart City Board. So applications are being accepted now through September 13th. And the qualifications to apply are just that they must have lived in Capel for at least one year and as well be a registered voter. So capeltx.gov/boards is where you can go to actually apply for a board, as well as see those summaries of, see those summaries of the board. We are placing, or we will place advertisements in the local papers. This is just as, an example of the graphics that we'll be using this year, done by Brooke in our office. She's amazing. And we'll be using social media, e-news, water bill inserts, and just a variety of different email blasts. And we're also doing targeted groups this year with Vision 2040 participants, allies and community members, and as well getting information out through WeChat. So the, the, what I will say is, the list of interviews that have been included in your, the list of interview dates that are included in your packet are based off of the assumption that council would like to hold in-person interviews. So last year, we did everything virtually to accommodate safety and social distancing. I would like to get direction from council to hear whether or not you would like to move forward with in-person or if you would like to do Zoom interviews. The, 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 the interviews would be held all in, at Town Center. If you do choose to move forward with that, they're always first come, first served in terms of the board, the board members arriving to be interviewed. We will utilize conference rooms and have two going at the same time. So that's why you see them stacked the way that they are. And like the mayor mentioned, we will have a work session scheduled on October 26th. If, October 26th, if there is a need to have members moved around or appointments changed. And then on November 9th, we will read those names into the record. And then I'm also seeking direction from you all to find out whether you would like to still hold a swearing-in ceremony, as well as a boards and commissions reception that we traditionally hold every year. So I'll pause right there to answer any questions.
What was the first question?
Whether or not you would like to hold in-person interviews?
Yes.
Or Zoom interviews? And then your reception and swearing-in. Go ahead.
Kevin?
Go for it. Are the current boards and commissions, are they, are there some, some still meeting online as well as in-person? Is it still a mix right now?
As of September 1st, everybody, the quorum must be present at a physical location that is accessible to the public. So yes, they are still meeting via Zoom, but they will be moving back to in-person meetings.
And that's best state law, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Oh, that's my state law.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the governor.
Yeah. I know.
He hasn't. Today is Tuesday. Tomorrow, we could have.
I know, and I, sorry.
So it's only quorum that has to be present, right? You can do remote.
Like you can have like one or two in the interim. As long as there's a quorum.
Correct. And for a council meeting, for example, five is a quorum. It's okay.
Well, because like we, like it changes on a daily basis at our work too, right? Like, you know, yesterday it was I could have all my people fly in in a few weeks. And now it's, oh, you can only fly in if you're vaccinated, right? So there's so much that's happening and, and it's shifting on a daily basis. And I guess, I guess, I just want us to be mindful of that. And I guess I, I don't have clear direction other than I want people to feel comfortable. We're all meeting in person right now, right? And everything seems to be moving towards more in-person. But I don't want people to feel like, oh, I can't interview because it has to be in person. So I guess giving people the option when they sign up or when they decide, like to say, would you like to be virtual? Would you like to be in person? I don't, I don't know. I, I guess I want to, I want to provide some flexibility.
So just keep in mind that the latest data from Dallas County showed that 90% of our adult population in, in Capel was immunized.
But there may be people who cannot get vaccinations.
That's true. And I'm not disagreeing that we need to give them the option, but you know, we're very highly protected.
Agreed. I, I, and I understand, sorry, just. And I, and I understand that. I think it's just a matter of the fact that, and I only say this because I have a person at home who actually does all the contact tracing. And all that to say is even people who are vaccinated are getting sick. And so I just want to be flexible and mindful to that. And I know in the past, in the past, and this is from historical perspective, we were like, you had to come in person. If you didn't show up in person, then we didn't interview you, right? And that was the rule. And we're just in different times.
Yep.
Agreed.
So, sorry.
Kevin?
I think that, I don't think there's any problem with interviewing anyone over Zoom as long as we're being very forward with the disclosure that, about the quorum rules and things like that. And just with the understanding that this may be an expectation in the future. And, you know, maybe if you can't, you know, if they're starting to bring in quorum issues, maybe if you can't come in person, we just need to, again, I, I agree with what you're saying. We shouldn't be exclusive of people that have concerns because we're still not out of the woods yet. But also at the same time, we need to be very realistic that if there are quorum requirements, people need to be able to adhere to those and, and just understand those things, so.
Well, that, generally when we do the interviews, we'll talk about attendance requirements. And there are very specific and very detailed attendance requirements. And that'd be just one to add into it. I mean, it would fit low right in. I mean, if you miss more than two meetings in a row, three meetings in a row, you know, you're automatically disqualified. So, you know, we talk about that during the interview process. Let's see, Mark?
Well, you know, I think I've said this in the past. We, for the past few years, I don't think we should be adhering to this, you have to be here in person because we have the technology. I, I think some candidates have missed out because their mom died and they had to go to Seattle and couldn't get back in time. So, you know, I, I think we ought to keep it open, you know, in the future as well, in the coming years.
All right. I'm hearing, keep it open and leave it to the candidate's discretion. Is that what I'm, I think I'm hearing a consensus there? Anyone disagree? All right. John?
I'm worse about in-person thing. I think it's only fair that we give them an impersonable interview and give them the feedback right up in the front. I think that's, that's me. But, you know, and by all means, they want to be protective and come in and that's fine. But if there was a necessity with Zoom, I'm fine with that. But I think unless the rule change, I'm more about being in person because I think a lot of the things that they're going to be doing as a, a, one of the members is going to require them to come in moving forward.
Just a comment on that, you know, very similar to what Mark said. You know, I, I think in technology has evolved, we as a society have learned how to operate Zoom, number one, and then how to, you know, you know, work in an environment. I, I think it's something that's going to be with us for a long time. And I want to make sure that we are forward-thinking and that, obviously staying within, you know, the rules and laws and things like that. But, you know, if there's opportunity to interview and things like that, I, I think we need to look at. I mean, we're doing it today. You know, we have people that, we had a, you know, earlier, we had a, you know, the, the presentation where she couldn't come in because she was injured. She still got her job done. I think that's, that's just a testament to where we're moving in society.
Anybody else?
And I'll, I'll just add real quick. Don, I completely understand. I've always been about, you, a lot of, I think in the past too, of just having that in-person, having that conversation. I think it says a lot, right, from a commitment standpoint. We have also, as Mark mentioned, missed out on a lot of great candidates because for whatever reason, they had a situation and weren't able to make it back. And we ended up in situations where we'd look at the list and we're like, like, you know, we only had three people that showed up in three spots. And so we missed out on those other two because they couldn't be there for whatever reason. I think again, if, if we set out the rules and understanding, right, of you have to be there in person, again, maybe 2022, we can do something different. I just think in 2021, flexibility and adaptability is really something we should be embracing. And especially having a board about being a smart city, as I look at Mr. Swatch over there too, right? Like having technology and embracing it is also part of being a smart city. So again, not to say we have to stick to whatever we do this year, but if we can just be empathetic, I'd, I'd like to err on that side.
Don?
Do you, have y'all given thought to an idea of we would do it hybrid in-person and, and Zoom option? Have you given thought to how that would even work logistically? Would it all happen on the same night or would it?
So I, I created two schedules, one for solely just in-person and then one for solely just virtual interviews. But, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we want to go in a direction that's, the candidate gets to make that decision for themselves. So yes, we would set up a, a monitor, you know, and I'm thinking through this. Set up a monitor where we can access those Zoom candidates. And maybe, you know, do them all at once at the beginning and then, you know, bring in the, the candidates that are in-person or vice versa, whichever one works smoother.
One of the troubles you have is if you let the candidate select the date and time, then you get, you have to coordinate that with both of the council members. It's almost impossible to.
We don't want that.
So we're, we're, we're pretty firm on that.
But I'm just, this is when we're going to meet. Can you make it?
Yeah. And that's, so the, the date and time is fixed. But, so Kevin?
Just a quick, do we have the, like, I know you said that, so like Wednesday, the 29th, we've got a two 6:00 PMs.
Yes.
One would be maybe up there, one would maybe, we have the capability to hold two separate meetings in those two separate spaces and coordinate, manage all that?
That is correct. Yes, sir. We will make it happen.
Don?
So just, I saw, so I think I heard a couple of different things. Because I, we were talking at once about this year's meeting and accommodating people who may, there may be people out there that may not want to be in-person. So that's, that's one thing we were addressing. Then I also heard like Mark, you were, you were talking about more long-term, like if someone just has a conflict and needed to do it a different time, is what you were referring to, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Because if there are people, so taking those sort of split, I guess, is the way I was viewing that. For this year, if there were people who wanted flexibility because of the situation we're in, I could, I could see us doing that. I guess I'd still like the somewhat rigid, this is the time. What, how did Cliff put it, that you, we're meeting now, can you make it?
Yeah, we're meeting now.
Approach.
That's not, that's not a region.
Right, to make sure we're not scattered all over the calendar.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Did I just repeat it, what everybody already agreed to?
No, no, no. I know it's good for clarity.
I don't like that.
Sorry, ma'am. And just real quick for, for, and I appreciate the clarity because that's absolutely right. We, what we've done in the past is we, we don't have makeup sessions and we don't say, like, you have, you know, we can pick another day. And the reason for that is because our availability and availability on the, on those boards, you want to have the same people interviewing the people for that, for that particular board or you're not able to make a decision fairly.
Right, okay.
So.
And it also makes it so much easier if you're all fresh on everyone that you've interviewed.
Right. Yeah, so to clarify, if, so based on this direction, we would inform candidates who are selected for interviews, you have, this is the date, you have these two options. Please let me know how you would like to proceed. And then I would coordinate with the, the interviewers to make sure that we've got technology and we've got, you know, all that ready for you all.
I'm hearing a consensus that we will proceed that way.
Okay.
With the choice of the candidate.
Perfect. Swearing-in ceremony, boards and commissions reception. I know it's a long time off. It is December.
This will be our single member, our single meeting in December. We traditionally swear in the candidates and have a reception form for the council meeting. We didn't have one last year and that's what she's asking. I think we're up.
To have.
To have, yes.
Okay.
Ma'am?
I do want to make just one, one comment because I see a note. Conduct review board typically does not interview because they rarely meet. So I also need to, is that something we would like to continue with or is that something you want to?
I'm, that was my, I wrote that note down for him.
Yes.
So the, that board, to my knowledge, has never had a meeting?
No, the way that y'all have done that is that the person has to be an attorney. And that you, I'll get the policy to y'all on the way it works because there's, for lack of a better word, it's kind of a drawing straws. You know, in terms of however many people signed up for contact review board, if you were to ever have to use them, there's a little bit of a process on how to select them. It's not necessarily the interview process.
That's the board I want to be in.
Yeah.
I've interviewed them in the past.
Many years ago, and then y'all, y'all.
They have been, Jim Whitwell was the city manager.
We went back to a pool, we went back to a pool, we went to a pool approach.
Yeah.
And it was, and it was a, a pool of eight to 10 people and you'd would pick three. You're fine. I can't remember to do that actual, if you, if you ever had a.
You, you, early on, in the mid teens, y'all had been interviewed, yes. But then after y'all went through that process, y'all came together and said, let's not do that because you do take it as a pool now in terms of the applicants.
Do we give it to the special counsel? Is that?
That's what this is.
I thought, I thought we had conduct review and special counsel separately before.
That is correct. They, sorry, special counsel is a board and conduct review is a board. So they're two separate. So they're two separates. Yes, and conduct, both special counsel, you are required to be licensed attorney.
That's what I'm talking about. And now the conduct review.
That is correct.
When do you want this priority list, when would you like that submitted to you soon?
Actually, before you begin. I, I have a preferred date for the mayor to get those back if you, if we would like, mayor.
Well, certainly.
The mayor would like these preference lists back.
Listen to this.
By Friday, August 13th, so that he can assign those interview groups back.
No, 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 not, August 13th?
He, yes, you will give them to him by August 13th.
This Friday.
This Friday, mm-hmm. And then he will pass those along back to me so that we can publish them on the website.
How does the mayor feel about this decision?
And you have a hard copy, yes?
Yes, I do.
Let's give everybody an extra week on that.
Okay, I will do that.
The 20th?
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right. We're at the end of work session, the, the time is 7:29 and we will be moving into the council chambers for our regular session.
Can you give us a couple minutes?
Calling a Mr. Long. Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here. Tonight is Tuesday, it is 7:38 PM and we have adjourned from work session and we are convening into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Persons wishing to speak tonight for the, either the citizens' appearance or public hearings must sign the appropriate sheet outside the council chambers and pass them on to, and the city secretary will pass those to me tonight. We do have a public, several public hearings and also a citizens' appearance tonight and those will be coming up during our agenda. We have Kamal Manik with the Generate Life Church who will be giving our invocation and then we will be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Kamal, thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in Jesus' name. We want to thank you for this time, Lord. We want to thank you for each and every council member here and for the mayor and for this city of Capel. We thank you, Lord, for what you are doing in this and through this city, in the whole state of Texas and even through, throughout America. We thank you for the leadership that you have given to this city, Lord. We pray, Father, for more than anything else, for your wisdom upon the, upon the leaders of this city. And we thank you, Lord, that you will use them, that your name may be glorified, that Capel may become a, a platform of God's glory, oh God, we pray. We thank you and we praise you, we give you the glory. We thank you for this day, we submit this meeting into your hands and we give you the glory. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item number six on our agenda tonight is the citizens' appearance. I do have three people that have signed up to speak for the citizens' appearance and I'm going to ask them upright. I know that we have a proclamation that you will be participating with. Is there a desire to speak separately during the, the citizens' appearance? Sin, and Sin, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not doing good in groups. Nancy and Sinman, y'all are, y'all are good, okay. Then we have nobody else signed up to speak, so we'll move on in our, in our agenda. Item number seven is a presentation by Tracy Eubanks regarding the Metrocrest Services Capital Campaign. So Tracy and company, welcome.
Thank you. Use this? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Land. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present and give you an update on our capital campaign and ultimately a new facility that we hope to open early in 2023 and we're certainly seeking support from our member cities. I want to thank a number of my board members for being here to check on me tonight. We really appreciate, appreciate their attendance and their support. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you once again for all the support you've provided us over many years, but also these last 18 months during the pandemic. It's been an interesting time for us, been exceptionally busy, we're still exceptionally busy. Just to give you a couple of stats, we normally help 12 to 15,000 individuals in a year. This past, the first year of the pandemic, we helped 35,000 individuals. We distributed four million pounds of food, which is about four times normal, $4 million in rent, which is eight times normal. We helped about 300, over 300 Capel families stay housed during that time period. We could not have done that without your assistance, so thank you very, very much for that support. As you know, this is our 50th anniversary. Thank you for the proclamation that you provided us a few months ago. And for 50 years, we've leased space and for the last 20 years, I've been on a facility task force somehow, looking at what are we going to do for the future and I think we're finally there. So we're talking about building our future currently. So a little bit about our capital campaign and what we want to accomplish. At one point I want to make is that we embarked on this project well before the pandemic. It's not a reaction to the pandemic, although we certainly learned a lot through the pandemic in terms of how to design the facility to make sure we could handle disasters of a variety of types of disasters. We've always said over the years, when someone asks, where do you want to be? We've always said we want to be near Josie and Beltline for a variety of reasons. There's a high density of poverty at that area and also it's a straight shot down Josie and Beltline to all of our partners that we work with. And so I never thought we'd literally be at Josie Beltline, which I'll show you in a moment. We have a campaign, a $12.7 million campaign to build this new facility. It's on 4.6 acres in Carrollton, near the Josie Beltline intersection. It is in what's called a neighborhood empowerment zone, which is a highly depressed, economically depressed area. We have a large concentration of the families we serve within walking distance of the intersection. We're excited about being in the right place. If you've been to our current facility in the warehouse district in the Valwood area, we are not near any of our people we serve. So we want to be closer to our customer. And we believe that this location will improve accessibility, allow us to increase capacity and with the dark line right out front, people will be able to access us without having to worry about using their gas money. That's what the big challenge often is to get to places like Metrocrest. So the facility is going to be 48,000 square feet or so, maybe 46,000 to 48,000 square feet. And areas of expansion opportunities for us would be our case management area, our social workers. They do all the heavy lifting in our place and when someone comes in with a crisis, they're the ones that first meet with them to assess that crisis and how we can help. We want to make sure there's more space for them. During the pandemic, we've added staff, so we've already begun adding staff in that department, but we continue to do that. We're also going to increase our employment area, which is where we focus on education, finding transformative type jobs, where we have financial education, we have a computer lab, so we want to expand those areas. We do find that once a crisis is averted, that a, a transformative job, a livable age job can make a huge difference in a family's life. And so we want to make sure we're focused on those types of things. We will expand our food pantry. Currently, if you don't know, we have two locations. We have the office in the Valwood area, we have a warehouse nowhere near that area, so we're incredibly inefficient today. We'll be bringing everything together under, under one roof. We're adding a teaching garden to the property. We've already talked to Capel gardens because Capel obviously has the, the expertise and we want to have a garden on site mainly to bring the community together, not just to harvest food for our pantry, but just to bring the community together and learn more about gardening. Bigger volunteer space at this place, we have to turn away volunteers currently if there's a large group. And then we're looking at this shared space concept, we're still working through this, but we do a lot of different things, but we don't do a lot of things that people need like domestic violence support, legal advice, legal aid, that type of thing, pediatric support, physical health, mental health. So we're looking at adding some partners to our site so that our clients will have access, easy access to those things that are commonly needed, complimentary services essentially for us. I put on that slide homeless prevention services and I made a similar presentation to Carrollton last week and I wanted to make sure that they understood since they will be in the city limits of Carrollton. We're not opening a homeless shelter, but as you see, more and more often, there's more of a homeless population, a growing population. You heard it during the work session when BJ Wagner talked about the mental health initiatives were the first responders, we've been helping with that project. We want to make absolutely sure that when someone calls us, that we know how to answer the question about homelessness. Currently, we are about homeless prevention. Inevitably, we get those calls, we want to make sure we have a, we'll call it a resource center for the moment. No shelter, but being able to answer the question, if your police department calls us and says, I've got someone in need, that we would know what to do. I'm not saying we don't know what to do now, but we need to know a lot more and so we'd like that to be a part of the project as well. We're very metric-driven and so we're going to make sure we continue to improve metrics that matter to us. We're here to serve our neighbors, we don't want them to have to wait and so we want to make sure we have a system in place with adequate staff so that people can get to see us quickly. Just imagine that you're about to be evicted and we tell you, we'll see you in two weeks. That, that can be quite stressful, adding stress to already stressful situation. We'll serve more folks between now and 2023. Nutritious meals increased by 727%. There's a large, high level of food insecurity in our communities. We're adding a mobile food pantry so we can go out, so if someone can't get to us, we're going out to apartments, to churches, schools, senior centers potentially, wherever there is a concentration of need, we'll go out. And in fact, we, we believe the mobile pantry will be paid for by the, the Lions Clubs in our community. So the Capel Lions is actually leading that charge on a grant to help us purchase that in early 2022. Currently, if you've been to our place, our food pantry is out in the parking lot. We do drive-through because the volume is so high, we can't wait to get back inside again. We believe in the dignity and respect of choosing your own food. Access to health services, again, I talked about complimentary services we hope to add to our site and then expanding some of our programs, workforce being the one that we think is most critical. We do want to help more with jobs, education. We will pay for you to go back to school, pay for certifications, we just need to engage you and so we hope to be able to engage people to a greater degree. Our timeline, I will tell you that our, our timing is not always stellar. We launched our capital campaign in February of 2020. And in about a month, we, we kind of changed gears. We relaunched in August. So we did launch the campaign in August in what's called the silent phase. Obviously, I'll talk about this topic with anybody, but we're mainly focused on larger foundations, larger donor opportunities and I'll give you a fundraising update in a moment, but that's been our focus. In December of 2020, we did purchase the property, so the 4.6 acres, which used to be a church, First Christian Church, which relocated to Lewisville. We own that property currently. We will go public in October, so on October 30th, we'll celebrate our 50th anniversary for the last time and then launch the capital campaign. Maybe it won't be for the last time, but we'll milk it for two or three more months, I'm sure. But we'll have a Golden Gala and then we'll launch the public campaign and if you say, I already get enough emails from you, Tracy, well, just get prepared because there's going to be more coming. We're going to talk about this all the time. January, we believe construction will begin in 2022 and then in April of 2023 or thereabouts, depending on materials and labor, all these other crazy things that affect construction nowadays, we will open this new facility. Our budget, which is likely to change because of material costs and so we'll have a final budget, whenever we launch this publicly at the end of October, we'll have a final number. This is what we've been working off of so far, a $12.7 million budget, most of that's construction, also the purchase of the property and then some, building in some funds for growth. Whenever we open, we know there'll be some additional expenses that we don't currently Just a reminder in terms of where the location is, each of those gray dots represents 10 families that we serve pre-pandemic. We were, I guess we don't have a laser, but we were in the wide area, we're currently in the wide area where there's no clients. And so we're moving to Josie Beltline where there's a high concentration of, of need and we're excited about being in what we think is the perfect location. I gave you some packets that has all this in there, including this PowerPoint, some nice renderings to look at. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions. This is the facility here and facing Josie for the most part there, Beltline's just to the south here on this particular picture. Just a few of the renderings. We want it to stand out again, if you know Josie Beltline is an area that hasn't had a whole lot of investment of any significance for quite a long time. We think this project will make a difference in that particular area of town. While it is a tilt wall building essentially, it has, we have some pizzazz here, it hopefully stands out. When we talked to the architects early on, we really were telling them, we really wanted this to be a welcoming place. We wanted people to feel like they, it was okay to come here, they should not feel ashamed and this is their place to come if they need help. And so that's what we tried to create here and I'll show a couple more pictures. So we wanted to be welcoming, separate entrance for our pantry, so if you just need to come get food, you can come through there, you're not bottlenecked in a lobby anywhere, you can come and get your food. We're big into branding, if you didn't know that already. And love, love the glass, love the look and feel, that would be kind of a Josie facing in a sense there. And I don't expect you to be able to read this, but essentially, it ends up being a two-floor facility. The bottom floor is where all the client-facing activities will occur. Our case managers will be there, our workforce specialist, our pantry, our volunteers will be there, our meeting space will be there. We'll be offering our meeting space to anybody that wants to have, like a civic group and need to have a meeting, for instance. We have a 30-seat computer lab as well in that space. We're excited about what's going to happen down here, we think it can be truly transformative. And then upstairs for administration, some meeting space and frankly, a break room, which I'd call an employee decompression area, a lot of our. A lot of our staff, especially case managers, deal with a lot of stress every day, so having a separate place to go. So fundraising update, we obviously made a, we've made a request to our four partner cities, and actually, I have reached out to Dallas, by the way, Mr. Land, so I'm going to try to wrangle Dallas into this as well. Of the 12.7, we've raised almost 6.4 million in 11 months, which we think is pretty good in a pandemic. We've made good progress. We've got a ways to go. We'd like to be at 8 million or a little bit more than that at the end of October when we go public. We have a number of outstanding solicitations. We did make a request to each of the four cities. I've already presented to Carrollton. I present to Addison in two weeks. I have not heard back yet from Farmer's Branch when my date there would be, but I'll follow up with them. Then we have a lot of outstanding requests that will be, we've pushed out recently or will push out very soon. So what we've always felt, from our annual funding perspective, is that we don't want to be dependent on any one funder for a project or for an annual gift. And so we're certainly looking for support though throughout the community, from our government, from civic groups. Lions Club has really stepped up, Rotary Club, Capel Road represented them last week. A lot of individuals, a lot of foundations are also supporting the project. We're excited about it. We know it will positively impact our community, the Metrocrest community, and you guys have always been very supportive of the work that we do, and hopefully you'll continue to do that. This is a community project, and so when we think about the project, this is not about Metrocrest Services as much as about the community and bringing people together to a place. And so hopefully, we can get this place built really, really quick. It'd be really nice. We thank you very much for your support. Thanks for allowing me to present tonight. Thanks for your consideration, and thanks for the ongoing support. We really appreciate it.
Tracy, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Eubanks? Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, I'm really excited about the vision you have for this new building. You know, at first, I was wondering, you know, why were they building a new structure? And then when I see everything that you've laid out and all your plans for expansion, it makes total sense, and I applaud you for your long-running vision, and I really support this project.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, good to see you and the board members here. Welcome. Good to see you all. Yes, it's me being the liaison to the Metrocrest. I get to hear these stats all the time, at least once a month now. So it's great to see you're progressing this well, the campaign. Like Mark mentioned, that I am also in support of this vision that you have, and I just want to remind the citizens of Capel how important this Metrocrest service to us and the city of Capel. I'm just going to read some stats that you provided to me in the past. 939 Capel residents served in 2020. That's a 46% increase over the pre-pandemic levels. In FY 2021, Capel city residents between October 20th, 2020, and to April 2021, 20th, rent paid to ensure housing stability were 52,980. That's about 61 rent checks to the Capel residents, and visit to the food pantry by Capel families, 840. So those are stats that you're helping Capel residents. So we do appreciate the collaboration and the partnership that we have with the city and the Metrocrest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, thank you very much for your time, and thanks for coming on out. I'm sorry, did I have?
Thanks for the opportunity.
Sorry. Thank you very much for coming out, and I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Yes, thank you very much.
Item number eight is Annual Report by Span Transit Services, and we have Ms. Diane Beck Welcome.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Captain. I am the Communications Manager at Meals on Wheels of Denton County in Span, and this is Diane Beck. She's the Mobility Manager for Span. Okay, so we just want to share with you guys a little bit about what we do and who we are. So Span is a nonprofit. We started in 1974 in North Texas, and our mission initially was to enable people to live as fully and independently as possible by providing transportation, nutrition, services to seniors, people with disabilities, and veterans, as well as other members of the public. Our vision today remains the same. With Meals on Wheels of Denton County, we strive to eradicate hunger with our seniors and their pets with our Senior Paws Program. Senior Paws started in order to prevent our seniors from sharing their meals with their pets. We also have a gala coming up, so I'll leave this flyer with you all. At the gala, all proceeds will go towards our Meals on Wheels clients, and I will go over to Diane Beck with transportation.
So Span Transportation is a demand response program that provides shared ride service to Denton County residents, and all 37 of our vehicles are wheelchair accessible, and the passenger fare one-way is $3. A little bit of history, and you heard Tracy already, and he was instrumental in getting this started, but this is a history of the partnership and services. In 2016, Span partnered with the city of Capel and Metrocrest Services to provide transportation to Capel residents in both Dallas and Denton Counties. We have greatly enjoyed our partnership with Capel and Metrocrest Services. Each year, Span participates in National Night Out with the Capel Police Department and has enjoyed being involved with Capel activities such as the farmer's market and coffee with cops. So these are just a list of some trips, and the average in 2018 was 102. In 2019, the average for the month was 122, and for fiscal year 2020, because of the pandemic, the average was 48 per month. And trips for Capel residents will be fully covered by the CARES Act in fiscal year 2022, other than the fee that they pay us. These are some of the trips that we provide. Education was 65%, medical 13%, shopping 10%, workshop, which is helping people get to and from the day habs where the disabled people get life skills training and vocational training. That's at 7%, and recreation is at 3%, and then just a smattering of other things that are in there for 2%, which are mostly administration. This is a map of the boundary where we'll travel with the people. You see as far south is Las Colinas Medical, to the westward side, to the Grapevine Mills Mall, on the eastern corridor by I-35 over there, and then as far north as the Music City Mall, right there. We do go slightly out of the boundaries sometimes, but not very far from those. And in addition to increasing sanitation of vehicles and promoting social distancing, so we've been doing that since the pandemic, but we always cleaned our buses, but now we're doing regular fogging for full sanitation. We ask all drivers and passengers to wear masks, and if they don't have one, we provide one. And hand sanitizer is available on all vehicles for riders and drivers, and passengers are asked to social distance. All riders are screened prior to scheduling trip if they've recently been in contact with someone who has been tested positive for COVID-19, or if they've traveled outside of the area. And also, all drivers and riders are asked to stay home if feeling ill. We're very proud of this. We started, well, with the help of Judge Edes and DCTA, we created a partnership in to get people at no cost to them to COVID-19 vaccinations at the Texas Motor Speedway. And that started February of 2021 to May of 2021, and we provided transportation for over 340 people. And thank you so much. I know the mayor is new, and pretty much everyone on city council is new, so I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity, and we really appreciate all you do. And do you have any questions for Carrie Captain or me?
Counsel, any questions, comments? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. A little while ago, you mentioned the, it's covered by CARES Act, but then you said, other than the fee that they pay us...
Yeah, that's a fee that the rider pays.
Which is $3.
That's $3. Yeah, they pay the fare, but the city, we won't come after the city for any, because it's covered by CARES Act.
Okay, because I thought you said, I heard it as there's an other fee that you get from something else, but that's not...
No, the fee is the fare. I meant to say fare. The fare that the rider pays, they're still responsible for that because that's not covered by the CARES Act, but the city won't have to kick in any funds this year because of the CARES Act.
Okay, thank you.
So just the fare to the rider.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate Span's working with the city of Capel over the years. I remember back when we first started doing this through Metrocrest, we had a lot of discussion on the boundaries and where we were going to serve, and you guys greatly expanded your boundaries to serve our citizens, and that's remained constant, and I certainly appreciate the services that you've given our citizens. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all.
Item number nine is a proclamation. Counsel, for your consideration, and I believe there's some members here that are to come up, come forward and receive the proclamation. Ms. Fisher, Ms. Wang, Sinman, and anyone else that's so inclined. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas human trafficking is a recruitment harboring transportation provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, coercion, for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude, and whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as civil and human rights violation, and whereas the United States estimates that between 600,000 and 800,000 individuals are trafficked, boy, I'm going to have trouble with that word, transported across international borders each year and exploited through forced labor and forced to have commercial sexual activity, and whereas the U.S. is a major destination country for international transportation of these victims, as approximately 14,000 to 17,000 people are trafficked into the country each year, and these numbers do not include domestically transported children, adults, and whereas, according to a study conducted by the University of Texas School of Social Work, there are approximately 313,000 victims of human trafficking at any time in Texas. There are nearly 234,000 adult victims of labor trafficking in Texas at any given time. And whereas in July of 2021, Texas Governor Greg Abbott signed nine bills into law cracking down on human trafficking, and whereas we must remain vigilant to fight this crime and other crimes that accompany it to keep our children and community safe, and whereas more awareness and education is crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our communities, state, and nation, as whereas the city of Capel has a strong commitment to social justice, and the month of August is therefore proclaimed to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month, I urge the citizens of Capel to support efforts to take action to end this human trafficking. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Capel to be fixed this 10th day of August 2021. Counsel. Mayor Protem Brianna Hinojosa-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a proclamation designating August 10th, 2021, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you. Councilmember Bijou has a second. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Neville-John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. There were so many organizations that were subject to this that when I took a look at all of them, there were really too many to list. So Ms. Fisher, I think you have something to say, and I know our other ladies do as well, so...
Thank you, and I just want to make a point. I'm Tracy Fisher. I'm here on behalf of myself, not on behalf of the school board. I just want to make that clear. But about five years ago, I kind of started looking at this a lot more carefully because there was an invitation that was received by a woman from far, far away, and so we've kind of been looking into this issue for a little bit. But what I would tell you closer to home, you know, women and children are disproportionately more impacted by this human trafficking issue of late. And in fact, the 87th Legislature, he mentioned, Governor Abbott signed, the legislature passed a bill that you're going to see the results of all over our community. What they approved was to make schools across the state of Texas no human trafficking zones. So there will be signage now on our campuses throughout the state that will indicate that. We are coming up this month of human traffic awareness, there will be some activities, and we'll get that information out, and certainly all of council, you'll all be included in these. Hopefully, you can come and see and learn more. We always learn more every time we get involved in this. But one of those events will be a documentary about a horrific trafficking situation that happened during World War II that really wasn't realized or made public until the early 1990s, about 50 years later. That documentary's been shown around town a few times, but here's another opportunity to show it as well. The other thing is we are working with the Capel Police Department and the federal, the feds, I guess, to talk about some human trafficking issues that are much closer to home here in Capel, and also ways to spot concerns or problems that might be existing. So I just want to thank, well, I guess you already did it. Thank you so much for supporting this proclamation. It's an important global issue, and we have a very rich global community. So, thank you.
Good evening. Oh, do you want to hold it? That would be awesome. Good evening. I am Sinmin Pak. I moved... Can I move my mask?
You may.
Good evening. I am Sinmin Pak. I moved to Capel in 2004. I am the founder of Unforgotten Butterflies. Unforgotten Butterflies is a nonprofit organization working to educate and raise awareness about comfort women and human trafficking. In 2015, I attended a program on human trafficking, and I was shocked to learn that Texas ranks second highest in the nation for human trafficking crimes. Even more shocking was the methods of trafficking remain same for present victims as how comfort women were trafficked almost 80-plus years ago. False promise of a better-paying job, kidnapped, and sometimes even sold by their own family due to poverty and for financial reasons. Learning of these similarities propelled me to work on educating and raising awareness about comfort women and human trafficking. In 2016, comfort woman survivor Lee Ok Sun, who was 90 years old at that time, was invited to speak at SMU. During this time, she graciously agreed to visit Capel High School to speak and meet with IB students. Both male and female students were all moved to tears and thanked her for her bravery and for her strength. I remember survivor Lee Ok Sun thanking students for their time and asking students to help her, help her regain her dignity and justice, help her to make sure comfort women are never forgotten and similar crimes are never repeated again. To my surprise, I had met several people locally who have shared that their grandmother was a former comfort woman. So this issue is not so foreign. August 14th is the International Comfort Women Day to remember, honor, and support all comfort women and all victims of human trafficking. Unforgotten Butterflies will host an event this Saturday at Cosby Library from 10:30 to 1:00. And 1:00 PM, this year marks 30th anniversary of public testimony by Kim Haak Soon. She was the first comfort woman survivor to ever speak up and reveal the truth in 1991, August 14th. I fully support and I thank the city of Capel to proclaim Human Trafficking Awareness Month to support all victims from past to present and to eradicate present and possible future human trafficking crimes. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. you, thank you so much.
I am Nancy Wong, a longtime Capella resident for more than 30 years. Over the years, I have seen the demographics change, but what doesn't change is how the residents in this community care about our town and our children. Human trafficking has been going on for a long time, and it has extended its ugly tentacles into Capella. We must make sure the history and consequences of human trafficking and sex slavery are not forgotten, because without the recognition of how these heinous crimes occurred, and without many of the villains being punished, the crimes will continue. As one of the many Asian-American residents living in Capella, I can relate by thinking about similar atrocities against women in recent history. One prime example is the young girls and women kidnapped or lured under false pretenses by the Japanese military during World War II. Hundreds of thousands of young girls and women were forced into military prostitution. Anywhere where Japan had invaded, they set up comfort women stations to serve their officers and soldiers. Furthermore, you may not know when there's a connection to yourself. My 90-year-old mother was a young girl during Japan's invasion of China. She recently, quite accidentally, talked about how her mother took the young kids and escaped from Nanjing, where the rape of Nanking occurred. I suddenly realized that had my grandmother not been able to escape, she and her daughters, young daughters, very likely would have been killed or at least raped, or they could have been forced to become comfort women. Obviously, a very likely consequence would be that I wouldn't have been born, and I would not be standing here. We have the special responsibility to make sure history from the past is not erased and is taught to the younger generation, so that they will not forget to fight against these atrocities. I hereby urge the city of Capella to proclaim Human Trafficking Awareness Month, to support the victims, and to help eradicate these crimes. Thank you.
I don't know how to do this, since there's three of you.
There's three.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, as we move into our, the business section of our agenda tonight, let us remember that every short-term decision that we make here may have long-term effects on the city of Capella, and that long-term change can only happen with our own collaboration and consensus. Our consent agenda tonight is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget process or through past council actions. These items may be pulled and considered separately by a member of the city council. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, is there any item that we need to have pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Carol.
I move to approve item number 10, the consent agendas, items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Thank you.
The new guys.
All in favor?
Long Hinosa Smith, Carol Neville, Jen Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. That is the end of consent agenda, and item number 11 is a public hearing to receive input on the proposed 2021-22 budget for the Capella Crime Control and Prevention District. And with us, we have Ms. Kim Tien.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this, here this evening, and I'm going to be with you for a while. So, this evening, we have three public hearings, and then three agenda items requesting your consideration of approval. The three public hearings and the three agenda items are all related to the proposed 2021-22 budget and property tax rate.
Would you prefer to do these separately, or we can combine them into one action?
And so, we were going to do them separately. So, I'll walk through each of the public hearings and stop if there are any questions, and then you can open and close.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So, the topic of the first public hearing is the Crime Control and Prevention District. As required by Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code, the governing body that created the Crime Control and Prevention District shall hold a public hearing on the budget adopted by the Crime Control Board. The Board did hold the public hearing on May 25 of 2021. No citizens signed up to speak. The public hearing was closed, and the Board approved the proposed budget. Before I present the crime control budget this evening, I would like to take some time to provide some history and some background of the Crime Control and Prevention District. This is a separate entity that is governed by the Local Government Code, Section 363, and as a separate entity, the district is governed by a Board of seven members, which the Board is currently the voting members of the Capella City Council. The district receives its revenue from the 1/4% of sales tax, the election for the sales tax originally passed in November of 2007, and the district began collecting tax in April of 2008. The initial time period was for five years, which would have expired in April of 2013, but in November of 2011, the sales tax was reauthorized for a 10-year period with a new expiration date of April of 2023. So, for the district to continue, the next vote must take place on or before November of 2022. Since the 1/4% of sales tax is restricted or committed to expenditures for a specific purpose, the Crime Control and Prevention District is considered a special revenue fund of the city of Capella. So, now that I've provided some background in the history on the Crime Control and Prevention District, I would like to move to presenting the budget. So, I'll start with the revenues. Total Crime Control and Prevention District revenues are projected to be about $2.9 million for the next fiscal year. Sales tax is the primary source of revenue for this fund, and is estimated to be about $2.6 million, or almost 90% of the total revenues. As I previously mentioned, the district does receive the 1/4% of total sales tax, of the total sales tax received by the city. A projected sales tax revenue is based on Rule 3.334 becoming effective October 1 of this year. Therefore, the proposed sales tax amount shown here is 55% less than the current year amended budget for sales tax revenue. Remaining revenue is for, is from salary reimbursements and interest income, which totals $295,000, or about 10% of the revenues budgeted. The salary reimbursement category is what the city will receive from Capella ISD for the school resource officers. Next, I'll cover the expenditures. Total Crime Control and Prevention District expenditures are projected to be about $4.1 million for next fiscal year. The district does fund the School Resource Officer Program, a community police cooperation program such as National Night Out, the Women's Self-Defense Classes, and the Citizens Police Academy. It funds the North Texas Emergency Communication Center, which is the dispatch center that we share with Carrollton Farmers Branch in Addison, and it also funds the Police Patrol Prevention Programs. The Crime Control District has 19 authorized positions. Those positions support the SRO Program and the Neighborhood Community Policing Program. There were no additional positions added for the upcoming year, and there are six vacancies in the Crime Control and Prevention District, which will remain authorized positions, but no funding is provided in the 21-22 budget to fill those positions. The proposed budget does include a 3.5% step increase for public safety employees, as well as the cost of the Joint Dispatch Center, jail services provided by Carrollton, and an administrative services reimbursement from this fund to the General Fund for services such as personnel time, computer usage, and legal services, that are paid for by the General Fund to this, paid for and provided by the General Fund to this fund. The reimbursement is based on a cost allocation study that was performed during calendar year 2020. It also included a proposed budget in the annual transfer to the capital replacement fund. In summary, as presented, the revenues for the fiscal year 21-22 budget are estimated to be $2.9 million, and the expenditures are $4.1. This is an overview of the Crime Control and Prevention District's proposed budget for fiscal year 21-22. The agenda item is the public hearing on the 21-22 proposed budget for the Crime Control and Prevention District, which will, the governing body that created the district is required by Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code to hold. The actual adoption of this budget will occur with the adoption of the entire city budget scheduled for consideration of your approval later this evening. And now I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
So, these are public hearings. So, item number 11 is a public hearing to receive comment on the Crime Control District. Ms. Owens, was there anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Having no one signed up to speak, we can, we need to, I need a, I would need a motion to close that public hearing. Mayor Protem Hinosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing for item 11. And, that's it?
That's it.
Close the public hearing.
And I have a second by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long Hinosa Smith, Carol Neville, Jen Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. And then, item number 12 is a public hearing, so I'll open that public hearing. We've already heard Ms. Tien's comments, so, Ms. Owens, did we have any, anybody signed up to speak on that one?
No, sir.
All right. Ms. Tien, did you have anything to add to that one?
So, this is item 12?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to do a presentation on the proposed budget also.
It's in.
This is the proposed budget for the city as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, this is the proposed budget for the fiscal year 21-22 budget for the city as a whole. As part of the budget process, a public hearing is to be conducted by the city council to receive public input concerning the proposed 21-22 municipal budget. As part of the public hearing, I would like to give a brief overview of what is included in the proposed budget. Before I do that, I would, before I present the proposed budget, I would like to take a moment to explain the budget process. The budget process began in February with department directors and their staffs developing their budgets. Their proposed budgets were submitted to the Finance Department in mid-March, and departmental budget hearings or reviews with the city manager's office were held in April. A virtual town hall meeting was also held in April to obtain public input. Staff held five budget workshops with council. One was in May to present the Crime Control Prevention District, and then four were in July. The proposed budget was filed with the city secretary's office on August 5. So, tonight, the public hearing on the proposed budget is being held, and the adoption of the fiscal year 21-22 budget is also on this evening's council agenda. I'll begin by covering the general fund revenues. Total general fund revenues are projected to be approximately $63.7 million for next fiscal year. This is a decrease of approximately $382,000, or about 0.6% of the current year adopted budget. This slide shows the eight revenue categories that contribute to total general fund revenue. First is property taxes. It is the primary revenue source of the general fund. Property taxes total about $41.1 million, or approximately 64.55% of total general fund revenues. Proposed property tax revenue is based on property tax rate that is less than the voter-approved rate and greater than the no-revenue rate established by Senate Bill 2. The next revenue category is sales tax. Sales tax is estimated at $10.6 million, or about 16.7% of total proposed general fund revenues. The proposed budget for sales tax revenue is 55% less than the current year amended budget. Again, the reduction is related to the change in the Rule 3.334, which does go into effect on October 1 of this year. As you can see from this graph, the majority of revenues received by the general fund are from property tax and sales tax. These two revenue categories account for about 81.26% of the general fund revenues. The change in the Rule 3.334 is pushing property tax as a percentage of total revenue up, and sales tax as a percentage of total revenue down by about 11% when compared to the current year amended budget. Historically, between 52% and 53% of general fund revenues was from property tax, and about 27% to 28% was from sales tax. The remaining six categories represent about 18.7% of general fund revenues, or, so of the six remaining categories, I would like to point out that the charges for service category represents about $2.2 million, or 3.4% of the general fund revenues. This category includes fees charged for ambulance services and fees charged for parks and rec that, by their department, for various rec programs and services. This revenue source is down from current year. Although city facilities are open, attendance has not returned to pre-pandemic levels, so the proposed budget is in line with the 2020 actual revenue for this category. Next, the other revenue category represents almost $1.1 million, or about 1.72% of total general fund revenues. This is another revenue category that was decreased from current year adopted budget, and the decrease is the result of two items. First, the decrease from, decrease in the transfer end from CRDC, again, related to the change in Rule 3.334. So, since we're projecting a 55% decrease in sales tax revenue, the transfer end is also lower. Also, the other revenue category includes interest income. Rates are still very low, and the Fed has not indicated that they're going to increase the Fed's funds rate, so interest income proposed in the budget is less than the current year adopted. These reductions are being offset slightly by an increase in the administrative services category. The administrative services category's proposed budget is about $3.1 million, or almost 5% of general fund revenues, and this is where we record the reimbursement by other funds to the general fund for services the general fund provides to those other funds, such as, again, the personnel time, computer usage, and legal services. The proposed budget includes reimbursements this year from water sewer, the drainage utility district, the cemetery, CRDC, the Crime Control and Prevention District, the Juvenile Case Manager Fund, and the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund. Historically, only the water and sewer reimbursed the general fund, but a cost allocation study was done during calendar year of 2020, and the consultant recommended that other funds also reimburse, and so that recommendation was included in this proposed budget. Next, I'll cover the expenditures. Total general fund expenditures are approximately $63.2 million. This is a $933,239 decrease from the current year adopted budget. This slide shows expenditures by division as well as by classification, and it's just two different ways to look at expenditures. And this evening, I'll focus on expenditures by division. One item that will apply to all divisions is regarding salary and benefits, and the change between the current year adopted and the 2020 proposed is a decrease for this expenditure classification, and the decrease can be attributed to the net impact of merit increases for general employees of 3%. general employees of 3%, a step increase for public safety of 3 and 1/2, and then the frozen and budgeted positions, and then reconciling actual medical elections to what's being budgeted for each employee. I will start with the General Government Division, which includes mayor and council, the City Manager's Office, City Secretary, Finance, HR, the Enterprise Solutions, Procurement, Community Development, Community Information Services, and Legal, which represents 14.7 million of total general fund expenditures. This is about $1.5 million decrease when compared to the current year budget, and the decrease can be attributed to, first, the current year adopted budget included about 1.2 million for the Beltline Road project, which is not in the proposed budget, and that was a one-time expenditure of the current year, and that money was budgeted so that we could reduce the amount of bonds that we issued for that project. The current year adopted budget also includes items related to COVID that are not in the proposed 2022 budget. These decreases were offset by some increases. One was the cost of participating in the governmental agency risk pool because we added Fire Station 4 in Phase 2 of the cemetery, and an increase in the capital replacement transfer related to replacing four ambulances that are on the fleet vehicle replacement plan to be replaced in 2022. Next is the Public Safety, which includes police, fire, emergency management, building inspections, animal services, and environmental health. It represents approximately 25.9 million of total general fund expenditures. This is about a $256,000 decrease when compared to the current year adopted. The decrease is the net effect of a one-time purchase that's in the current year budget by the Environmental Health Department to, it was costs for a solid waste contract consultant, and that's not included in the 2022 budget. And then the proposed budget includes a one-time expenditure for improvements to the dog run at the animal shelter. The next division is Public Works, which includes Public Works, Fleet, Facilities, Streets, Traffic, and Planning. It represents about 11 million of the total general fund expenditures. This is about a $993,000 increase when compared to the current year adopted. For Public Works, the items impacting the change between current year adopted and the proposed budget are an increase in the transfer to the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, some increases to services, for example, expanding the holiday lights to include an additional bridge, the art center, Fire Station 4, and the columbarium at the cemetery. They also included developing an electric vehicle strategic plan with electric vehicle charging stations. They added Fire Station 4 to various building service contracts. Included are also increases in maintenance because the city added the Fire Station 4. There are additional maintenance costs, as well as the city is keeping vehicles longer, so there's more maintenance costs to maintain those vehicles. The traffic budget also included to perform pavement striping and upgrade the pedestrian crossing equipment, and Public Works expanded their GIS license to an enterprise-wide to accommodate the use of asset management software. And the last division is Culture and Rec, which includes Life Safety Park, Library, Parks, Core, Camps, Community Development, the Senior Center, Tennis Center, and the Biodiversity Education Center. It represents about 11.5 million of the total general fund expenditures. This is about a $204,000 decrease when compared to the current year adopted. The decrease is the net effect of an increase in services to cover the cost of holiday lighting display for the features at Andy Brown East, and a decrease in the credit card fees that is the result of council approval to pass debit and credit card fees off to consumers who use their debit and credit card to pay for services. Next is debt service, and debt service, the, is used to account for the principal and interest on outstanding debt. This fund derives its revenue from property taxes and interest earnings. Property taxes are projected to be about 9.4, and interest earnings, $10,000. The expenditures associated with servicing the debt are interest paid on the debt of about 2.8 million, agency fees of $10,000, and then the bond principal of almost 6.7 million. The debt repayment is fairly rapid, with 66% being retired over the next 10 years, and about 88% in 15 years. These percentages will decrease if bonds are issued, or it could increase if bonds are retired early. So, special revenue and internal service funds. The city has 17 funds that are classified as special revenue funds, and two funds that are classified as internal service. So, each special revenue fund has a dedicated revenue source, and the expenditures are restricted to a specific purpose. The revenue sources for the first six shown in the first column are from fines and forfeitures, for example, traffic tickets. The last fund, which is the red light enforcement, was used to record red light camera violations, and the city no longer has red light cameras, so the red light fund will know, will be going away, and the fund balance of this fund is being used to pay for the Axon cameras used by the police department, so when that project is completed, this fund will no longer be shown. The hotel occupancy tax, which is the first fund shown in the second column, receives funds from occupancy tax remitted by hotels located in the city, as well as occupancy tax remitted by short-term rentals. The remaining six funds in the second column receive revenue from various sources. For example, the donations special revenue fund is where we record donations from individuals and businesses who have specified how they would like their donations to be used. The Drainage Utility District is from the stormwater fee that's shown on the water bill. Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery's revenue source is from those who purchase burial rights and other services from the cemetery. So, these 14 special revenue funds do not receive any funding from property tax or sales tax. Now, the three special revenues funds shown at the bottom of Column 1, the Crime Prevention District, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, and then the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, are funded with sales tax but not with property taxes. Specifically, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund receives a quarter percent sales tax for street maintenance. The Crime Prevention District receives a quarter cent percent sales tax that is used for the crime prevention programs, and CRDC, the CRDC fund receives 1/2% sales tax for projects that qualify under the 4B legislation. The CRDC debt service fund does receive a portion of the half cent collected to repay the principal and interest on CRDC-related debt. The remaining two funds in the second column are the internal service funds. The city's internal service funds are the self-funded health plan and the capital replacement fund, and these funds are used to account for the cost of goods and services provided by these funds to the other funds and departments. And finally, the Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund is classified as an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are used with the intent to recover the cost of providing goods and services through user fees and charges. Proposed water sewer revenues are about 19.7 million and approximate the adopted 2021 budgeted revenues. As shown on this slide, the major source of revenues is the sale of water. The city receives about 61.3% of the budget, or about $12.1 million, from this revenue source. The next largest source of revenue for the Water and Sewer Fund is from sewer sales or the sewer treatment services. The fund receives 36.2, or about 7.1 million, from this source. So, water sales plus the sewer sales equals about 97.5%, or about 19.2 million of the 19.7 million projected revenues for the Water Sewer Fund. The remaining 2 and 1/2%, or about $500,000, is revenue from interest income, impact fees, and other revenues. The proposed budget does not include a water sewer rate increase. As a review regarding water and sewer rates is typically performed in the fall after we receive final rates from Dallas Water Utilities and TRA. The proposed expenses of the Water and Sewer Fund are about 19.5 million. This is an increase of about $1.2 million, or 6.8%. The increase can be attributed to an increase in the utility operations budget. The utility operations budget increased is related to the inclusion of a wastewater condition assessment, the DeForest lift station improvements, which involve, encompass a screen wall and driveway improvements to those items, valve replacements at the Village Parkway pump station, and replacing camera used to inspect storm and sanitary sewer lines. The proposed budget also includes an increase in the cost of water. Dallas Water Utilities charges the city a demand rate and a volume rate. The demand rate is the fixed charge that the city pays whether we take 1 gallon per day or 18.5 million gallons per day. And I use 18.5 because that is the most that the city can request in one day. This portion of the cost of water is increasing $391,923. The volume rate is increasing 13.2%, which is projected to cost the city an additional The proposed budget also includes an increase in debt service for principal and interest payments, and the increases related to the $7 million bond issued, bonds that were issued in April of this year. Since the Water and Sewer Fund is operated similar to a private business, principal and interest payments on bonds issued for water and sewer projects are budgeted in the Water and Sewer Fund, as opposed to a different fund like when we issued general obligation debt. There are about $27 million in water sewer bonds outstanding. About 53% of the current bonds outstanding will be repaid in 10 years, and about 80% will be repaid in 15 years. Current bonds outstanding will be repaid or paid off in 2041. So, these increases were offset by some decreases, specifically the cost of sewer. Although Trinity River Authority's rate increased 4.6%, Public Works has taken steps to reduce the inflow and infiltration, and are comfortable reducing the projected flow provided to TRA to 3.5 million gallons per day, down from the current 3.8 million gallons estimated for this current year. In addition, the utility billing budget is also lower as a result of the change in the credit card fee policy, which passes the debit and credit card fees to the customers who pay with a debit or credit card. The Combined Services Division budget of about 2.5 million does approximate the current year adopted. This division, again, includes items such as general property and liability insurance and the reimbursement to the general fund for the services that the general fund provides to the Water Sewer Fund, as was mentioned when I talked about the general fund. So, a couple of things to note. The cost of water and the cost of sewer division make up 57% of the expenses of the Water and Sewer Fund, and these expenses are contracted cost. Utility billing, utility operations, and combined services make up about 32% of total expenses, and then debt service represents about 11% of total services. Again, the expenses by classification is just another way to look at the expenses of the Water Sewer Fund. So, in summary, the proposed budget includes the anticipated revenues and expenditures for not only the general fund, but all funds of the city. The total impact on the fund balance of all funds of the city is a decrease of $171,779. The fund balance of the general fund is expected to increase about $556,000, and the debt service fund balance is expected to decrease by about $84,000. The fund balance of special revenue funds is expected to decrease by about $1.2 million, and retained earnings of the proprietary funds is expected to increase by about $562,000. So, this concludes my presentation of the proposed budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. By the way, you did smile at us when you started talking about the Water and Sewer Fund.
I know. I'll have to work on that for the other funds.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Tien? Councilmember Matthew?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question for you, Mayor, is we have the public hearing, item number 12 and 13, then we have 14 and 15 for adopting this. So, in the past years, did we have that on a separate date? Then we came, can you explain this? I just wanted to understand this.
I'm gonna have to bow out because of the changes in state rule 3.334. There have been significant changes in the way that these are presented.
Right.
I'm sorry, SB 2. We've had significant changes to SB 2. Kim is well-prepared to take care of that one.
Yeah, thank you.
So, historically, prior to SB 2, the public hearings were held one evening, and then the council voted the following evening. SB 2 changed that, and so the public hearing and the vote can occur on the same night.
So, when will the public have the opportunity to make the comments, since we are adopting the budget and approving the tax rate today?
Right now. During this public hearing is when they were to make the comments, and there was a full-page ad that provided that information to the public.
So, moving public hearing today, and we are voting on the public hearing to close and approve the budget, then we are adopting, is that when we make comments, if we want to make changes to the tax rate, and so on and so forth?
The answer to your multiple questions was yes. Tonight, during the discussion about the ordinance for the adoption of the budget and for the adoption of the tax rate, which are two different items.
Right.
You, as counsel, have the opportunity to make any comments that you would like to make, as with any other time during a council meeting when you deal with ordinances. So, it's no different than what you've had to do in the past. You've always had this opportunity. As far as the public hearing process.
Right.
Because of SB 2, there were changes, and this is the, unfortunately, the outcome of those changes for doing it this way. And it all relates to that no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. It has to do with that process, given the timing that's set. You know, that's the best way to explain it. It has to do with SB 2 and the way that they set it up. As far as the overall budget, when we had our work sessions, if you remember, the council wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to speak, so they created the citizens' comment before and after. So, the citizens during those particular meetings had an opportunity to comment and ask questions, and then, per your request, we created the budget.
Input.
Input@capltx.gov.
Email.
And I think we've gotten a total of three.
Yes.
So, it's been advertised, it's been promoted, it's been usually advertised in the newspapers, more than just one. So, this is, as you know, as serving on the council for as long as you have, this is what we have.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the citizens had ample time to comment on.
Yeah, we started this process back in April with comments all the way through July, and now here we are.
Yeah, but we didn't get the assessment from the Dallas and Denton County until very recently, right? So.
That's the way it's always been. July 27th is when we get the information from Dallas County and DCAD as far as the appraised information, but as part of the process, we had an estimate that we gave you all the way through that process to base the budget on as we went through that process. And then this evening, or actually, I guess it was over the weekend, when we got the final numbers, then we were able to, you know, have this consistent with what we presented to the council last Thursday during another workshop in which the public had an opportunity to speak before and after, and you had the opportunity, well, the council had an opportunity to ask any questions related to the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It has been a very, SB 2. It has been a very, SB 2 did shorten the cycle from the time that we get the final numbers, which is what you were talking about, to the time that she is required to turn those in. So it is, it's unfortunate, but that's, we're complying with the state law by that. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I heard you say that we may have all of it one time. In other words, review, hearing, and vote. Is that correct, or is that we must have?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
You may, because we're not going over voter approval rate.
Okay.
The voter approval rate is what kicks this schedule in as far as if you were going, some cities, interestingly enough, this will be fascinating, this year, there are some cities that are busting the voter approval rate. And what they're having to do is adopt two budgets, basically. One with the voter approval rate and one with a rate that's just below the 3.5 percent. In order for the election to happen in November, that's why this calendar kicks in. So we advertised at 58 cents with the understanding that we were going to be below the voter approval rate, but we didn't get the final numbers in till this weekend, actually, that affirmed we were below the voter approval rate. So you have the opportunity to approve the budget this evening. That's, there's nothing that says you have to do it tonight. That's completely up to the council as far as how they go forward. But the process has us set up so that you have a public hearing the same night as you adopt the budget. That's just, that's just the way the statute has it set up, based on the calendar.
So if we don't approve the budget tonight, what is the consequences in terms of election?
Well, I know that we've advertised that the council will be approving the budget, voting on the budget this evening, so I had to look to Jennifer to see.
I don't think there's any time to call. We just advertised that we were having a public hearing.
Question then becomes, when's the soonest we can have the vote? Because I don't know what the calendar looks like for advertising for the next public hearing. So it's possible, I presume, that we could have it on the 24th, if that's what you would like to do, but it's at your preference.
No, I just wanted to understand the process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Carroll.
Just as a matter of clarification, because I just want to make sure I understand how we're following. So the final numbers y'all got this weekend that you referred to, is that a calculation of this?
So it was the final numbers from Dallas County. They do our actual, we can do, we do the calculation of the rates, but until we get theirs, they are the ones that certify it.
Okay, so the ones we received, like on the, what, 27th or?
The 29th, the Thursday, the 29th.
You had the big party, going over the numbers that morning. Those are the, what, those are not the certified numbers, is that what it is?
Correct.
Final numbers but not the certified.
Right, so the, the numbers that we presented on the 29th were, let me look. Oh, here it is. Okay, so the no new, no new revenue rate that we thought was .551657. Dallas County provided .551728.
Okay.
So we're really close.
Okay, so we had, okay, so now, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Right, and then the voter approval rate that we published was .583494, and Dallas County's was .582638.
Okay, so they were just.
So the proposed, the 58 is still appropriate.
Underneath, okay. So we were just certifying what we had calculated previously off their numbers? That makes sense.
We were certified, they certified.
They certified ours, right.
Their numbers for us, and the mayor was just asking me a question. I'm gonna give you the what-if, not to confuse, but if we had said that the maximum rate would have been the 5834, right, or 5833, which would have been below the voter approval rate, they would have certified it, and then the certification would have come in at 582, we would have been above the voter approval rate for what we advertised. Then you would have been in a position, to your question, Councilmember Matthew, of saying, okay, I need a motion to bring the rate down so that, or you could choose to have it above, but the logical thing to do would be to make the motion to bring it down below the voter approval rate so that then you don't have to get into the election.
Right, so just to follow up on that, 8.7 billion is the valuation, certified valuation, that you received from Dallas and Denton County this weekend, correct?
Correct. The, the value that we received that was filed in the budget is, goodness, it's eight, oh, it's eight, seven, well, I'm gonna go over that too with the tax rate.
Right, so the estimate we had that we've been working was, what, 8.3 billion, correct?
No.
So what was the amount?
So, and I have that for you. So the amount that we had been working with was 8,730, or 8,737,297,796. It was about one, it was less than $2 million difference in value.
So I remember you or someone else from the staff making a point that there were so many protests going on, so we may reduce the value.
So the value did reduce from, we thought it was going to increase originally based on the values that we had on July 22nd was about a 4.27 percent increase, and then on the 29th, after we got the values, it ended up being, we thought it was going to be 4.15. When Dallas County did all of their calculations, it was 4.13.
Okay.
Okay.
So from last year to this year, it's about 349 million dollar.
So.
Increased valuation, correct?
So I can tell you, it's a 346 million dollar increase. Of that increase, residential property values increased to 1.57. The average home increased to 1.15 percent. The real increase was in commercial property. Commercial property increased to 5.52, and business personal property increased about 10 and 1/2 percent.
Okay.
So that's really where a lot, most of your, the higher increases were.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Nevels.
I just wanted to say, as one of the resident newbies here, I really appreciate all the time and the dedication to educate us newer council members and walk us through this. Just want to say the finance department as a whole has done a really great job of getting someone like me up to speed, so I really appreciate your time, the entire department's effort and energy into that, and just really educating us about the process so we can make informed decisions. So I just want to say thank you to the whole department for helping us with that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add that after SB 2, all the rules changed for all of us, so we're all in the same position, and it's continuing to evolve. This is still a public hearing, and I believe Ms. Owens said that we had no one signed up to speak. So with that, I will entertain a motion for item number 12. Councilmember Neville.
I move to approve, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing on item 12.
And a second from Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Long, Keanu Suss Smith, Carol Nevels, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is a public hearing to receive public comment concerning the proposed 2021-22 tax rate of .580, and I opened the public hearing and turned it over to Ms. Tean once again.
Thank you. So this next public hearing is on the tax rate. Pursuant to Section 26.05D of the Texas Property Tax Code, the governing body of a taxing unit other than a school district may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval tax rate or the no new revenue tax rate calculated as provided by this chapter until the governing body has held a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and otherwise complied with Section 26.06 and Sections 26.065. The proposed tax rate of .58 is lower than the voter approval rate of .582638, but is greater than the no new revenue rate of .51728. Therefore, this public hearing is required. So this, the first, the property tax rate, this slide will show you that it's divided into two parts. Maintenance and operations, which is the portion of the tax rate that is used to fund the operations of the city and is represented in green on this bar graph. The other part is the interest in sinking. It's the blue portion of the bar graph, and it's the portion that's used to repay the debt incurred by the city. The proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2122 is .58, with .472211, or about 81 percent, being used to fund operations, and .107789, or about 18 percent, for debt service. The proposed tax rate of .58 is equal to the current 202021 tax rate. The value of one penny on the tax rate is approximately 873,546, which is based on the city's total taxable valuation of 8,735,456,273, which is 4.13 percent higher than last year. The 4.13, or 346,360, 346,360,230 dollar increase in taxable assessed valuation is the result of an average increase of 1.57 in residential property values, a 5.52 average increase in commercial property values, and a 10 and 1/2 percent average increase in business personal property. Included in these increases is the addition of new property totaling 52.9 million. The current breakdown of the total taxable value of the property in Capella is 55 percent residential and 45 percent business commercial. In the current year, and in 2020, the breakdown was 57 percent residential and 43 percent commercial. In 2019, the breakdown was 59 percent residential and 41 percent business commercial, and back in the mid 90s, the breakdown was an 80/20 split with 80 percent being residential. So you can see that the trend is a growing commercial property tax base. The property tax rate of 58 cents does raise 2,8889 dollars more in revenue from property taxes. Of this amount, 306,772 dollars is from new property. Overall, proposed general fund revenues are projected to be 382,000 dollars less than the current year adopted budgeted revenues. So what is the impact of the tax rate on a homeowner? This slide shows the impact of the proposed tax rate on a homeowner receiving a homestead exemption. The first section of this chart shows the average home value in Capella is 411,167 dollars for residential property receiving the homestead exemption. This is a 4,675 dollar increase, or about 1.15 percent increase in the value over prior year. Values are established by the Dallas and Denton Central Appraisal Districts. The city has no involvement in the property value setting process, and there is specific legislation that the appraisal districts must follow when establishing taxable property values. The next section on this graph or chart shows the total tax rate and the split between INS and MNO, and the change in each portion. So you can see that there's a shift to the interest in sinking from the maintenance and operations. The final section provides the annual tax bill for the city for a residential property with a homestead exemption is 2,385 dollars, or 27 dollars more than last year. The monthly tax levy for this home would be 198.75, or 2.25 cents per month more than the prior year. Next, I'd like to show you how your property tax bill is distributed. It's distributed between the city, the school district, and the county. So when you receive your tax bill from Dallas County, it reflects taxes owed to all taxing entities that serve your property. The total tax bill for all three entities, based on the average taxable value shown on the previous slide, is 10,327.86. The city's portion is the smallest portion of your tax bill at 2,384.77, or 23.1 percent, with the school district representing the largest at 5,312.28, or 51.4 percent of your tax bill, and the county represents 2,630.81, or 25.5 percent of your tax bill. So this concludes my presentation concerning the tax rate, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions on our proposed tax rate? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, Ms. Owens. Did we have anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Further comment from the council, I will entertain a motion.
To close the public.
To close the public hearing, thank you. Mayor Protem Keanu Suss Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing for item 13.
Thank you. And a second from Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Keanu Suss Smith, Carol Nevels, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have you had a drink of water yet?
I did. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Good, you're making me thirsty listening. Item number 14, would you want to go ahead and read it into the record, please?
Sure. Consider approval of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the city of Capella, Texas for the fiscal year of October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2022, and authorizing the mayor to sign. So this first item before you, for your consideration of approval, is an ordinance approving the, and adopting, the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Capella. The public hearing for this budget was held this evening. In addition to the public hearing, city staff held five budget workshops with council that were open to the public. The total general fund expenditures are estimated at 63.2 million. When considering all funds included in the fiscal year 2021-22 annual budget, total expenditures are 119.2 million dollars. In addition to the general fund, this budget includes special revenue funds, the internal service funds, the Water and Sewer Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and the Debt Service Fund, and finance recommends approval of the budget as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve item number 14, approving and adopting the budget.
Thank you, and Councilmember Hill, for a second, are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Long, Keanu Suss Smith, Carol Nevels, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 15, Ms. Tean, once again.
Okay. Consider approval of an ordinance of the city of Capella, Texas levying the ad valorem taxes for the year 2021 at .58 on each 100 dollars assessed value of taxable property on which .472211.
on which .472211 is for operations and maintenance, and .107789 is for interest in sinking, and authorizing the mayor to sign. So this item is being presented for your approval to adopt the fiscal year 2021-2022 ad valorem tax rate. The agenda item references the published rate of .58 per $100 of assessed valuation. This property tax rate is divided into two parts, maintenance and operations and interest in sinking. The property tax code's truth and taxation legal requirements for setting a property tax rate have been satisfied, and approval of this ordinance is required to fund the city of Capella's fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Tean on item number 15?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I have taken time to study this budget recommended by the city manager and the staff. Budgeted revenues total about $119 million plus for all funds, a decrease of .04% from the previous fiscal year. Our revenue from the sales tax is projected to decrease by 55%. I repeat, 55% from the prior year's amended budget. For a total expected sales tax revenue of 21-plus million, of which 10-plus million is dedicated to the general fund. However, our proposed budget expenditures totals 119-plus, 119 million plus for all funds, an increase of 3.07 from the previous fiscal year's adopted budget, which means we are going to spend more money than we will be collecting in revenue. To offset this difference, city staff recommended using money from the reserved fund or approve tax rate above no new revenue rate of .5517. These reserved funds should be used for infrastructure improvements like roads, bridges, back alley, and capital equipment purchase. We need to cut spending. We cannot wait for three years gradual reduction. In my personal finance, I would not spend more money than I have. More importantly, I would not use the savings account money to meet today's expenses. Sorry, my computer just, yes. So I would like to, I would, I would not use the savings account money to meet today's expenses. Just, I would like to apply the same principle with taxpayers' money. Cutting expenditure doesn't mean cutting hours at the core. Government pays monthly fee to get into exercise. We have reduced expenditures, and I thank staff for finding ways to cut expenses. But we must do more. Excluding public safety departments like police and fire, city can cut spending in targeted areas. Therefore, I am opposed to the proposed tax rate of .5. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve no new revenue rate of .5517.
There is a motion, and Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. After listening to Councilmember Matthews and giving some thought in previous days, I do agree that we should take into consideration as to what we can do to cut spending. And I do, I want to go and make, second the motion that Councilmember Matthews has made.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second to adopt a rate of .5517, which is the no new revenue rate. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Carol?
Just to clarify, to make sure I'm following the bouncing ball here. So with the new motion with a lower tax rate, we just approved a budget based on a 58 cents tax rate, and we don't want to spend into our fund balance. But I guess, so I guess I need help reconciling how we get to a lower tax rate without dipping into fund reserves under the new proposal. So I guess I, I guess I offer that as a comment and request any feedback helping me reconcile that loop.
So, I mean, you've adopted a budget at .58, so I guess you would have to pull that budget back.
Oh, no, Kim. You did approve a budget that have authorized expenditures at 63-some-odd million dollars. For every penny you indicated, it's about $870,000. So this is roughly a reduction of about, let's just keep it even, 3 cents. So let's keep that even as well. So 3 times 8, or 3 times 9, that's a $2.7 million reduction in expenditures. I can tell you today, the only way to get those expenditures is to reduce personnel, period. With our reducing personnel, the only way to make that work is then to have to do exactly what you don't want to do, which is to close the library at certain times, close the court at certain times, not offer programs throughout the city. Or we don't build streets, we don't do alleys, we don't do sidewalks. There is a trade-off to eliminating roughly $2.7 million, if that's what you want to do. So it's a choice. If you don't want to spend any of the reserves, which we discussed during the work sessions, and we said, going into the 58 cents, we thought we were going to spend roughly about 1.3. And when the certified values came in, this way we're not having to spend any of the reserves by keeping the tax rate at the same.
Protim Hinojosa Smith?
Before I make any comments, I'm going to call for an executive session, because I'd like to ask Mr. Hager some questions.
All right, we will convene into executive session at 9:19. From our executive session and are reconvening into regular session of the Capella City Council, the time is 9:34. Before us, we have a motion and a second to reduce the tax rate down to .5517. And we were in the middle of a council discussion when we adjourned, so I'm going to reopen that to discussion before we call for a vote. Is there any further remaining discussion on this item? You're getting past my ability to do Robert's Rules. All right, we will, I will, I will, I don't even know what you call giving in to the wiser council there. It's been called, and I will, all in favor of the motion before us to accept a tax rate of .5517. All in favor?
John, Matthew, opposed? Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neville, Hill, the motion failed.
All right, Ms. Tean, I'm going to turn the ball back over to you. Would you like to, do you have any further words on the agenda item?
Not on this agenda item.
All right. I will, I will entertain a motion then. Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 15, as stated.
And it's seconded by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neville, Hill, in favor, opposed? John, Matthew?
Thank you very much. Mayor Protim, I had just called on you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take an opportunity to thank our staff and our city manager for all the time and effort that you put into our budget. For as long as I've served, one of the things that I am most proud of in our city is the fact that we are truly a fiscally responsible city. And we have worked so hard to make sure that taxes are not raised. If they don't have to be, they're lowered when they can be. Our, our staff always comes with a proposal, or a variety of proposals for us to consider, and explains to us during our multiple work sessions that is open to our public, what are the pros and cons if we go up, if we go down, if we stay where we're at. And the current rate, tax rate that was just passed is, is basically, it's staying where we're at and where we've been. And that allows us to continue serving our citizens with the amenities that they expect from living in Capella, of making sure that our, that our streets are maintained, that we have libraries, that we have, that our library is open, that our core is opened. We've, we have been, our hands have been tied with situations and legislation that are outside of our control, and we have worked within those parameters and made the necessary cuts where we've needed to. And I just want to take an opportunity to say that I really, truly appreciate all that you do, and I know that every time that you come to us with your recommendations, Mike, you as well, is that you are always taking into consideration the best interest of every citizen that lives in our community. And so with that said, I know we already voted, but I support the tax rate as currently proposed and now passed.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Let's move on to item number 16, which is consider ratification of the vote of the 2021-22 annual budget, which results in more revenue from ad valorem taxes than the previous year. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kim Tean to explain this one.
Thank you. Pursuant to Section 102.007(c) of the Texas Local Government Code, when a budget raises one more dollar of revenue from property taxes than in the previous year, a separate vote of the governing body is required to ratify this increase. This separate agenda item is required because the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual operating budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget. The Finance Department does recommend approval of this agenda item.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Kim?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yeah, Mayor. So I just want to understand this again. Obviously, we are raising more than $1. We're going to raise about $2.1 million extra in, say, property tax, correct?
$2,8889, I believe.
So that requires a new vote? And what are we voting for, yes or no?
You're just ratificat, you're just recognizing that the tax rate will generate more revenue than prior year. That's all you're doing.
So if I, I'm opposed to the .58 tax rate, and so I'm trying to understand...
I'm, I can't give you direction on how to vote.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm trying to, I'm thinking it loud, you know, what exactly this, I never taken a vote like that in the past.
No, we vote on this every year. This, this was an agenda item last year as well.
Oh, ratification?
Yes, every year. This is standard.
Okay, okay.
Nothing new.
Counsel, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I just asked for a motion. I'm sorry. I have a motion from Councilmember Hill. I make a motion to approve item number 16. And a second from Councilmember, or Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith. Is there any discussion? Councilmember John?
Just to clarify, you did say ratification. It's just, we are actually ratifying what we approved, not just saying that we're acknowledging it, that there is additional revenue.
Okay.
Is that, is that?
I'm just reading to you what the local government code says.
Okay. That's all I need.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Long?
I've got a question, Kim. Isn't this, isn't this phrasing required by the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thanks.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion, the second we were in discussion. I apologize. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neville, Hill, opposed? John and Matthew, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 17, Mr. Kent Collins is going to read this into the record for us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. And I'm actually going to present 17 and 18 together. 18 is a companion item, so I'll go ahead and read both of those captions, if that would be okay?
That's quite all right.
All right. Item 17, consider approval... Item 17, consider approval to enter into a contract with McMahon Contracting LP for the reconstruction of South Beltline Road in the amount of $18,319,034.55, with a maximum potential incentive of $300,000 for a total award amount of $18,619,034.55 as provided for by 2021 Street CIP Fund and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. And then item 18, consider approval for award to enter into a contract with Kleinfelter, Inc. to provide materials engineering and testing services on South Beltline Road reconstruction project in the amount of $154,600 as budgeted from the 2021 Street CIP Fund and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to go through, the majority of my presentation is going to be on the reconstruction project. We've, we've been working on, on this project for a number of years on design. We, if I go back, say, five years, we were, we were planning on Beltline being a, about a $24,000-25,000 project. We were going to approach it in a way that we were going to remove the entire median. We were going to build it in about six phases. The way we were going to manage traffic was completely different. We went back a couple of years ago, well, about a year and a half ago. Did a lot of value engineering, considered changes in our approach. We're preserving, not, not removing the median. So we're preserving that space to the extent we can. And now we're, we're down at a, an $18.5 million project, roughly. So with that, that backdrop, this is the, the limits of the project, or the, the project area. This is the limits of the project. So it'll, it begins at Southwestern and stretches down to LBJ. You're familiar with Beltline, it's a six-lane divided roadway. You know, it was built in 1985. So we're at, knocking on about 40, you know, 35, 40 years of, of life for this project. We've overlaid it. We, a few years ago, we partnered with Dallas County to extend its life a few years to get us to this point. I've mentioned, we've, we've changed our approach to the project. Originally, we were going to try to maintain five lanes of traffic during construction, during reconstruction. The plan now is to build it in halves. I know you've, you've all heard a lot of this, this history already, but I want to restate it. We've, during the last council meeting, council approved a system to communicate on a, on a real-time basis what those delays will be to motorists so they can make informed route choices. So this, this slide presents a few photos. And it just kind of gives you a view of what it is we're going to be dealing with. The photo on the left, you can see the median with the trees. There's a lot of trees in this corridor. You know, if you consider the center median and the parkways, there's, there's over 300, 300 trees along this stretch. You know, there's, a lot of those are in the median. We are going to have to remove trees. Looks like we're going to probably end up removing about 50 to 60 trees, but we're going to replant more than that. So we're going to overplant when we're done. The center median is going to reflect what we've done on Denton Tap and Sandy Lake Road with the concrete barriers, the boulders, the new trees, the ornamental grasses, and the irrigation system. Design on the project started in 2017. Half associates has completed the design. It includes a full reconstruction of the pavement. And as well as rehab and replacement of the drainage, the water, and the sewer. We've TV'd the sewer line, it is in good condition. So we're going to be rehabbing all of the manholes, we'll be flushing the sewer line, but it is in good condition. We'll be making new connections for the water line. We'll have some improvements and some rehab of the drainage system throughout. But the good news is that, to a large extent, our utilities are in good shape. Funding for the project, I mentioned, you know, it's funded in the 2021 CIP Street Fund. That is backstopped. We, the council approved, we sold bonds for this project in April. We also have the $2.5 million or so in general fund set aside for this project. We also have utility funds that are budgeted for this project, cover those, those expenditures. We, as part of, of the companion item is with Kleinfelter. It's $154,000 and change. That contract, or Kleinfelter, is selected through an RFQ process. So it's qualifications-based selection. We go out every few years and select our engineering, our professional engineering services firms through qualifications. Kleinfelter has done materials testing and geotechnical, provided those services on other projects. They have the capacity, the depth, and the expertise to provide those services on this project. And the value of that contract is less than 1% of the construction cost. So we opened bids on, on the Beltline reconstruction. On July 29th, we received five bidders in response to that request. They ranged in, in cost from $18.3 million up to $22.8 million. We had two, two bids less than $19 million. All of the contractors were known to us. McMahon has been successful and is being successful on other projects in Capella. They are, they're doing the airline reconstruction project. They're ahead of schedule on, on that project. We do include, as mentioned here, the bid price was $18,319,034.55. There's a $300,000 maximum incentive. There's a daily value of $2,000 per day. So if they beat their, their bid number of days of 480 days, then they would have an incentive. We also have milestones in this project. So if they beat the milestones, if they beat their contract time, there's an incentive for them to complete the project early. One of the reasons we do that is that our experience is, you know, if a contract gets ahead and they've got slack in their time, but maybe they have other projects in the area and they can shift resources. I have personally experienced contractors moving completely off of a job for over a month at a time. And if you want to hear negative feedback from drivers, have lanes shut down and nobody on site and nobody working. The, one of the big purposes of incentives is to keep the contractors incented to be on your project, pursuing your project, try to get it done ahead of time. Obviously, if they miss their targets, they miss their milestones, then there's penalties of the same value. So here's, you know, this, this slide shows basically the pertinent items of the contract. You know, approval of the contract will allow our contractor to start the communication process. I was talking to them earlier. They, they plan to start doing some utility identification, some potholing. You know, while we work to get everything executed, obviously, they're in, they're in Capella, so they can start doing some of that upfront legwork. We'll start communicating out. Our plan is to send letters to all the businesses that would be impacted. They're going to have to meet with their, those building owners anyway, to talk about access, to talk about irrigation, identify those things. But we will send letters out and offer to meet with those businesses one-on-one. And really, that's the, you know, when we do a residential street, that's the intent of those neighborhood meetings, is so we have, can have that one-on-one communication. Since Beltline is more of a business street, we will be doing that already with those businesses. We'll be working with our communications team, communication staff, Hannah and her folks, using all of her, their methods to send information out on top of the letters. And then we've talked a lot about the, the travel time information system that we'll be implementing. When the project is done, the median will, will be similar to what we've done on Denton Tap and Sandy Lake. We'll have the decorative streetlights that we've implemented on those other streets. We're going to be extending turn lanes. We're going to be adding turn lanes where they don't exist. So that's, you know, I, I mentioned, you know, we will be removing some trees. They're mature trees, but we're also going to be replanting. So, yeah, so what we would expect is if this contract is approved tonight, they would begin mobilizing. We would expect, you've, you've heard us say airlines should be done by the end of August. That's their current schedule. So time, sometime in that late September, mid to late September timeframe, we would expect mobilization starting to work out there. They may have small crews out there ahead of that time, again, doing some of that upfront legwork. So item 17, Public Works Department recommends approval of this contract with McMahon Contracting LP in the amount of $18,619,034.55. That includes the $300,000 max incentive. And we also recommend approval of item 18, the contract with Kleinfelter for the materials testing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, questions? Mr. Councilmember Neves.
Again, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all the information. Just a quick question, I know you said that the sewer lines look good and everything. Do you have an estimated, you know, end-of-life date on those or the general condition? Obviously, you feel comfortable moving forward, just kind of curious.
They are in good condition. They're PVC, so you would, we would typically expect about double the life of a street, so 60, 60 years. But it's one where we'll have to monitor it, you know? And our plan is to TV that line periodically, ensure the condition is good, flush it on a regular basis. But yes, it is in good condition. And we TV'd it as part of the inspection process.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you is, this consulting, the construction company, McMahon, are they doing the Royal Street Project now, you said?
They're doing Airline.
Airline, my bad. Are they ahead of schedule now?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And how much were the incentives for if they finish it early? Do you remember?
Don't, do you know? Don't know. It's a daily value, it's going to be, I don't want to guess and tell you, but it's going to be in that $1,500 to $2,000 per day range.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because this is 2,000.
Right.
And I didn't know what it was for the past one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, the deviation between the five bids is, what, $4.5 million or something, top to bottom? And I see some of the detail and some of the breakout here that's provided, and so you can go in and find different places. But in general, do you have, why would there be such a huge deviation? Is it simply a matter of that particular contractor's overhead? Or, because I'm assuming this is, and even looking at this very, very detailed layout, it's, it's apples and apples, you asked.
It is.
So do you have sort of your thoughts on what, why is such a huge deviation?
You know, if you look at the different contractors, you know, size of contractor, proximity to the, to the project, what equipment they have on hand and available, crews available. Clearly McMahon is working in Capella. They, you know, does that contractor like working in a particular community? There's a lot of factors. For whatever reason, you know, the high bidder was, I think Mario Sinecola.
I think that's right.
They were the high bidder by a long shot on Freeport Parkway as well. So I don't know. I mean, it just may not be in their sweet spot for, for types of projects. But McMahon, they've done well on Airline so far.
Okay.
So, yeah. And we had Texas Sterling was really close. So we had kind of three that were pretty close there. So that gave us confidence that we, we had good, good bids. It wasn't like we had McMahon and then everybody else was up in the $24 million range.
Right, it looked like they were stair-stepped, basically, sort of incremental and everything.
Yeah, and that's fairly common, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions on item number 17? Any motion? No, we're going to do them second. Councilmember Neville?
I'd like to move to approve item number 17 and to enter the contract with McMahon Contracting.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Hill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
You, and item number 18. Councilmember Long. Thank you. Do I, I have, Councilmember Neville, you second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 19 is our city manager reports.
Mayor and Council just have a few things to report. And the first thing I'm going to start with is, I hope I pronounce Chiaka? Chiaka, and how do you say your last name? Okay. There will be a parade for Chiaka on Saturday, starting at nine o'clock. We'll start at Button and go east on Parkway over to Cowboy and end up in the gymnasium at CHS. We're still waiting on some confirmation on some things, but that's the plan. And Mayor Pro Tim, will you be in town on Saturday? Can you present a proclamation, because the mayor will be out of town? Okay, thank you. We have you down for that, but I haven't talked to you, so. Anyway, yes. Lucky for me, because I'll be out of town as well. But anyway, we'll be getting out that information, social media, webpage. We'll get out information to y'all as well, but those are the plans that are coming together now. So with that, on, as just a future meeting, we'll be getting information tomorrow on this. On November 4th, John Ames and Kenneth Nolan, our tax assessor collector and our chief appraiser, will be host, we will be hosting a meeting at the library for our community come. And both Mr. Ames and Mr. Nolan agreed to do a little presentation on their roles and responsibilities and then take questions from the audience. So hopefully, that'll generate some good conversation. As far as project updates are concerned, Airline is finishing up sidewalks and landscaping, so the end of this month still should be finished. Cambria paving is about 50% complete. Plantation, as you know, that's the big project over there. The sewer line work is continuing. As far as the intersection improvements, if you've driven up and down Denton Tap, you see the work that's going on at Parkway. It continues to progress. The left turn lane, northbound left turn lane, you can see that that'll be doubled. The eastbound right turn lane, they were working on today. Some of the mastarms have been installed. And then knowing that school starts next week, there'll be provisions for a safe route to school at all times during the rest of the construction. So Mayor and Council, that updates, that's the updates for tonight.
Thank you. So item 20 is Mayor and Council reports. On Saturday, August 21st, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Capella Art Center, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Community Health and Wellness Expo. Come speak with wellbeing experts and browse the show and join the activities. This expo is going to be the place to go for the latest in fitness, nutrition, health, psychology, workplace wellness, and more. This will feature technologies and practitioners who are leading the health and fitness revolution. Come enjoy the demos and healthy family activities such as a giant Jenga, putting green, stretching, massage chairs, and obstacle course, free COVID-19 vaccinations, and more. This is a free community event and is open to the public. For more information, please visit the chamber's website at capellchamber.org. And also in the, on the same evening, on August 21st at 8:30 p.m., the Capella Art Center drive-in movie series is featuring The Monsters, Inc. Tickets to the drive-in. Tickets to the drive-in are sold per vehicle for $15. The parking lot opens at 8:00 p.m., and spots are on a first-come, first-served basis. Concessions will be available for onsite purchase, and for more information, visit And for our citizens, please participate in our local government and give back to the community by serving on our boards and commissions. We are seeking passionate individuals to be a part of our boards and commissions process that helps guide the development, future needs, regulations, and more for Capel. Applications will be accepted at our website, capeltx.gov/boards, now through September 13th. That is all I have for Mayor and council reports. Item number 21 is public service announcements. Are there any public service announcements that need to be made? Mayor Pro Tim Hinojosa Smith?
Thank you. I think the only thing I want to make note of is schools starting next Tuesday, and so all that to say is, please, to all our drivers, just be cautious, because we have students that are walking and biking, and just want to make sure everybody is careful as they're driving because of school, so. And I wish everybody a great first day of school back.
Thank you very much. It's going to be a very interesting beginning of school year.
Agreed.
Any other public service announcements? All right, item 24, there was no necessary action from executive session. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we adjourned at 10:04 p.m.